Hi.
Wait, do you work there?
No.
No question. Do you have as much demand as those I look at?
My staff don't work there anymore once the school's out.
But you're still working.
Nights are live.
I
Corrected or no?
I work for a private agency so yeah, I just have a
New contract?
And I'm finishing boarding for the old contract.
Me? Oh, I thought Oh, no.
Where are people? I want to start on time.
What we got?
I know we don't have a clerk or say
There you go.
I don't know.
One's in the hallway.
Chase is not coming tonight?
She's at a conference.
Give us I had a three day So I had to work.
Oh, thank you. Hi, how are you?
I'm ready.
Are we be ready? What?
Are you sitting on there today?
I don't know. Oh, we're good.
Okay.
All right. You all ready?
I've been ready.
Are we recording?
Yep, let me guess, you were born ready.
Yes, I knew you're
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. What would you like me to call you this evening as you're sitting in for the clerk? Okay, acting clerk, can you please call the roll?
Uh Mayor Proton will pass it.
Present.
Mayor Brown.
Present.
Council members lead.
Present.
Council member Tucson.
Present.
Council member Simmons. Council member McLean.
Here.
Council member Nick.
Present. All right, so we have six of seven present. Uh, please rise if you're able for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation. One nation, one God, free, physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I will entertain a motion for agenda approval.
To move support.
It's been moved and supported. We have some updates. Houseman Tucson.
Yeah, so I would like to move resolutions D, E, F, and G to the consent agenda as well as um, the resolution to extend the Washington County dispatch contract to June 30th, 2025. And I would also like to remove um, resolution A from the agenda.
Okay, resolution A is the IGA, which we received an email. Hopefully folks are able to read it to give more time for the DDA to um, review and get it back. As the opposition has been moving to support. The IGA letter A.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, this afternoon.
Check my email at six.
Um, there were some updates sent out and then our city manager recommended removing it to give them some time. Any objections to the additions of the movement?
I'm just wondering, can we repeat what was moved?
Yeah, so what's um, being presented to be removed is resolution D, E, F, and G. Um, and also, no, what's being removed is A, I'm sorry, and what's being presented to be removed to the consent is D, E, F, and G, and also adding um, the resolution to extend the Washington County dispatch contract to June 30th, 2025 to the consent.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Folks need a second to look, or are we all set?
I'm still.
No number on this one.
Yeah, there's no number on it right now, but I think it'd be. But. Can add a number later. All right. So on favor of the amended agenda, please say aye. All right, so we'll move forward with the agenda as amended. You know, all right. This is our first opportunity for public comment. Members of the audience will have three minutes to address council. Um, I'll start with those who I have signed up on the list, and then I will move to hands in the audience and then move to Zoom. Um, when I call your name or acknowledge you, please come to the podium if you're able. Able, um, state your name and address for the record. But first I have here Guy Conti. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm uh, here to speak to you tonight about resolution uh, B, extending the towing contract with Wall Street Towing, Inc. Uh, I am the attorney for Wall Street Towing, Inc. Um, but I just wanted to let the council know some, some strange things about the contract. It doesn't look like a lot of contracts. For instance, the city under the contract, I want you to know, doesn't pay anything, right? This contract basically says that when the city, uh, mostly your department, your, your public safety people have public toes. They call Wall Street Towing. Wall Street shows up, does the tow. There's no bill to the city, but the city does uh, recover a forty dollar fee uh, from, from the, the owner of the vehicle. Wall Street collects that for you and remits that to you. That has been the way that this has operated for over a decade. We are proposing the exact same terms that Wall Street has had for over a decade with one exception. A raise in the daily storage rates from thirty-six to forty dollars, so a small raise. Uh, and I don't think it's gone up in at least three years, so. Um, but other than that, please know that Wall Street Towing is and has been a local company. Uh, they continue to be a local company uh, with their main office uh, and the recovery facility uh, on Railroad Street. So it's certainly convenient for students of EMU and other members and other citizens of Ypsilanti. Wall Street is proud to be a, a contract partner with the city for all these years. They, they have been in business for decades and have had this contract, at least as far as I know. I've been involved with, with them in this contract from the other side since two thousand and seven, when I was an attorney for uh, the city working for Mr. Barr. Um, so uh, in fact, I wrote that horrible, horrible towing ordinance that you guys just uh, uh, rescinded. Um, I won't give you the history on that. We don't have time. If it were my choice, I wouldn't have written it, but hey, I loved it because it was my baby. But uh, that being said, I think you did the right thing, uh, rescinding it. So anyway, um, if you have any questions, uh, a couple of people from Wall Street are here. Dave Chiketto, the manager, and Billy Salome, the, the owner, and uh, any questions would be welcome, and thank you so much for the, for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, Jeff Moore. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Muir, and I'm uh, one of the owners of Investors Realty Group. We're at ten North Washington Street. I live in Ypsilanti. And I'm here to uh, make a comment that's, I think, related to the item on the agenda regarding the mixed use development or the planned unit development at one twenty-four Pearl Street. Prior to our opening our office at uh, ten North Washington, we were tenants at uh, Centennial Plaza. And we had signed our lease under the prior owner. Um, so we were there during the transition and ownership. So I just wanted to share, you know, some of my experience with that, um, which wasn't great. And uh, we had a service issue, a leak in our office suite that uh, just leaked for a couple of months, never ever got addressed. And then when we came to um, depart there, we, you know, submitted the documentation requested in our lease to, you know, move out early. And um, what should have been a really very straightforward, you know, transaction um, ended up taking a couple of months, and you know, the emails related to it are, you know, pages long, um, and we still don't have our security deposit back. This is on a two hundred fifty square foot suite that rented for five hundred dollars a month. And my concern is, the way I read it, this development is sort of being sold as something that's going to, you know, help um, vulnerable people in our city. And, you know, if, if the people running it are willing to try and keep a security deposit from someone that owns a real estate brokerage, I just wonder how, you know, vulnerable citizens are gonna be treated um, when it comes to their security deposits or maintenance issues. So that's my comment.
Those are the two names I have signed up on the list. Are there members of the audience who would like to address council? Pastor Anna. Good evening.
Hi, thank you guys for having me. I am Pastor Anna Taylor McCants. I live in Ypsie Township, but I work right here at sixteen South Washington Street. I serve Fed Up Ministries as the pastor and executive director. You guys will be voting later on uh, on a resolution that myself and Michelle and Desiree have passed uh, along to you guys. Um, and I just wanted to give you a little update of how things have been going this year compared to last year. So we're on our, I think, third week of serving meals in the community in downtown Ypsie, serving free breakfast and free lunch. And we are serving more than a hundred folks a day. We are doing dozens of showers a day. Um, we are seeing tons of beautiful and smiling faces, sometimes interacting with people on their worst day, and sometimes getting to spend a lot of joy and joyful times with folks who um, are moving on up in the world. And so what we are doing is working, and what I'm here to say is, please, please, help us continue doing this amazing work. Please consider investing in this work. So I brought my boss in my bishop's office right here, CJ Clark. He's our director of evangelical mission in the bishop's office of the Southeast Michigan Senate of the ELCA. So he works in Detroit, and over the last four years, the ELCA has invested over two hundred thousand dollars into Fed Up Ministries and our work that we do in Washington County. So I'm here to say that the church is really invested in this. Our volunteers and our staff, the folks who come and eat in the community with us are really invested in the work we do. They're really invested in keeping this community safe and doing what we can to keep it clean, and so I am just imploring you, please consider our resolution today. Thank you so much. And also shout out to Josh, who has been so great, city planner. I, uh, Josh and Katie experienced me crying in, in the middle of a meeting with them when I got hit with another permit. But you know what? I came back. I calmed down after the fourth permit, and I was like, oh, there's another one for the signs that we don't have out yet, but that we will put out. And uh, you know, they just, they sat with me while I was a little emotional. And then I came back and said, here's the paperwork, and then Josh said, and here's what we need again, and I'm gonna, you know, come back at this time, and then you can pay the bills. So he really is a rock star. You guys did a great job hiring him. Thank you for helping me through this process. Um, and I'm just really grateful that we're like operating and doing the thing down here with you guys. So thanks again for having us here today and considering our resolution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Please come share. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Sherry Wanda, and I live at seven oh six Davis, and I work part-time with Fed Up Ministries as well as with multiple other organizations. And um, you're probably all sick of hearing me at city council meetings, but I hadn't intended to speak today, but then I saw that Fed Up was on the agenda, and I have been spending a lot of time down at sixteen South Washington and can just echo what Anna said. I had a really cool experience the other night when I was sitting there in the evening playing a giant Jenga game that was made specifically for that space. When a number of folks walked by and we invited them to come over and get a drink of water, and two of them pointed to bottles that they had and said, I can't come on the property when I'm drinking, and then they left. And I was blown away by that and thought about the difference between that and last year when I was down there like basically begging people to find someplace else to go. And I know that it's like not fixing things overnight, but the at the risk of sounding like flaky hippie girl, right? The vibe that is happening is so different, and that has everything to do with Fed Up. And in this heat, those showers are literally life-saving. And creating such a cooperative environment that we were able to work with Growing Hope to find some indoor space during the day this week when it was, you know, literally health hazard to be outside for too long. So I just really thank you for being in partnership with Fed Up and encourage you to deepen that partnership and financially support. Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience? Oh. Please come, and then Kat. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Matt Mauer. I live at nine nine three East Cross. I'm here to talk about uh, six B. So I'm a lifelong resident of Ypsilanti and a part-owner of my parents' co- my family's company, Mauer Management. I'm here today to talk about a current land dispute and active lawsuit between my family's company and the Peace Plaza developers. On Friday, June fourteenth, our access to our parking area and dumpster were barricaded in by Peace Plaza. Overnight, we lost twelve parking spots, our easement uh, of sixty years, and the ability to empty our dumpster. Over thirty Mauer Management tenants rely on the parking and dumpster that is no longer accessible due to the barricade. There were few discussions with the developer. Before it turned into a lawsuit, it became clear to us very fast that he felt entitled to our property. To put it as simply as possible, our experiences with this developer have left us concerned. Here is a list of some of our concerns. Um, number one, the asphalt parking lot covers land that was on an old gas station. We believe digging it up can cause some serious environmental risks. Number two, if the barricades are still in place tomorrow, our dumpster will not be able to be emptied, and this is a health concern. Number three, parking is currently limited in downtown and the surrounding areas. And we have to ask, where would the residents of the project park? It is a sixty unit building. Number four, the project would be receiving a very sizable tax break on luxury high-rise apartments for our city that I do not believe they can afford. Number five, they claim the apartments will be affordable, but our understanding is that a studio apartment will be twelve hundred dollars. We have studio apartments that run for seven hundred, which is what we believe to be affordable. The, number six, the area for the building is in the heart of the historic district, and the proposed building that has no historic qualities would be taller than the Centennial Center and does not belong in a residential neighborhood. Number seven, we are very fortunate that we have the ability to fight this in court. If this had happened to a homeowner, how long would they be able to fight this, and how quickly would their property be confiscated? And the final one, um, is that the developer has shown that he will supersede the legal prog- process and do whatever he wants. We are wondering what else he might do if this project is approved. I am asking council to not approve this PUD for Peace Plaza. Thank you all for listening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council and mayor. Um, first, I'm a little confused why um, the agenda was amended to remove um, the ordinance to amend the human relations ordinance. And I'm wondering if next time it's possible when um, council members or mayors uh, makes amendments to remove items for the agenda, they can give reasons possibly it wasn't removed?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. I must have misunderstood, so I appreciate the correction. Okay, let me move on. Pat Layton, thank you, and I'm a Ward Three resident. Um, so uh, first of all, we are approving the purchase of thirty-one uh, tasers, but yet we say there's not any money for unarmed um, non-police crisis responses. Which I think is an issue. Um, secondly, there's no necessary shade to Mr. Brian Jones Chance, who's a former council member of uh, the city of Ypsie, but I do think it's interesting that we're going to be reappointing him possibly to the planning commission when that same purchase that led to a recall election that costs twenty thousand or so thou- uh, thousands of dollars for a special election for Councilmember Simmons. I think that's a little interesting and just something to maybe put into perspective when you make your decision. Um, because he was also in part of that as a Realtor. The Housing Trust Fund Resolution I am supportive, and I hope council members pass that. Um, and also I am in support of resolution twenty twenty-four one fifty regarding the lowest law enforcement priority. For the investigation and arrest of people with possession of controlled substances, um, that will help make uh, drug checking equipment possible um, and legal, which will save lives. And then regarding the discussion regarding the Community Benefits Ordinance, I'm pleased to see this on the agenda. Um, and I look forward to maybe possibly working on that as a Human Relations Commissioner, um, if that's something that council would see um, fit for that commission. Um, and thank you, that is it.
Oh, please come.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Emmy Mauer, and I'm part-owner um, to Mauer Management with my family. I'm also a Realtor, interior designer, and property manager. Um, I wanted to introduce myself to everyone because my name is currently on the agenda for tonight's meeting, um, to be put on the DDA board. Um, I currently serve as a chair of the Operations and Finance Committee too, as well as work full-time and live in downtown Ypsilanti. Um, and it is my goal to make Ypsie a thriving community and inclusive for all. Um, on a side note, my brother just gave an accurate account of what is currently happening with one of our properties in Peace Plaza. The land dispute and the court case. As a property manager, I'm dealing with this issue directly and have received multiple complaints from my long-term tenants of five-plus years. Um, that their parking and dumpster access has been taken away overnight, um, which they rely heavily on. I feel like the developer should be more community-focused and work with the current tenants, neighbors, and stakeholders. This is why I'm asking you to please not approve this PUD.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Frances Tadaro Hargreaves, and I'm the Impact Investment Manager for the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation. I am here tonight to speak to you in favor of Peace Plaza's PUD. Um, as at the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation, our impact investing program has a priority of affordable housing and works to assist developers of color with access to capital that they've traditionally been excluded from. When the foundation reached out for developers to provide affordable housing here in our county, J twenty-nine-seven stepped up as a local developer, ready to invest their own capital and looking to create change. The foundation is excited to have partnered with J twenty-nine-seven. Peace, Peace Plaza will remain a leased commercial building downtown while also providing brand-new development of sixty units of housing. That will bring economic development and new energy to an intersection that is growing with the new additions of the transit center. The project has been a great opportunity to encourage and empower Black and Brown developers to build affordable housing in their communities. But the timeline of this project is tight and your support tonight is integral to the maintaining capital for the development. I would appreciate council's approval to move this project forward tonight to second reading so that J twenty-nine-seven can continue their work to make Peace Plaza a reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Okay, they are. Will do. Good evening.
Good evening, Courtney Ace Williams, Ypsilanti Township. I want to start by saying I appreciate, I really appreciate seeing the Fed Up Ministries funding on the agenda for tonight. I think what they do for the community is awesome and what Sherri had to say. Really, I would like to echo that, you know, they provide human services that we should be funding in our municipality. So I love to see it. And then I also appreciate having the Drug Checking Resolution on there tonight. And I just kind of wanted to reiterate some of the things that I talked about during the presentation on why this is essential in order for drug checking services to be operationalized in Ypsilanti. So participation is crucial in order for these services to be impactful. In order for participants to feel comfortable, they need to know they're not going to be arrested. The staff also needs to know that they're not going to be arrested for having samples on-site and for collecting samples. So this is just like basic protection for participants' staff. I think you guys all got a copy of the policy draft from the Prosecutor's Office. You guys should have received that. So that is going into effect pending some language review. The first language review was this past week. That's a policy for Washtenaw County and this resolution, the language from it is based, it's identical to the policy from the Prosecutor's Office. There's also two bills in the state legislature that support not just drug checking, but other harm reduction services, syringe service programs. So those bills are basically also in alignment with what we're asking you guys to pass here. We want to be able to move Ypsilanti down from the highest overdose fatality in Washtenaw County and the second highest in Washtenaw and Wayne County. So this is just, it's an evidence-based way to do it. We offer drug checking services. People know if they have toxic samples and they can get risk reduction counseling or they can discard those samples and lives are saved. So hopefully if in discussion you guys have some questions, there's a way for me to kind of come up and respond to those because I would love to be able to kind of illuminate anything that you guys have questions about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council? Oh, yeah. Please state your name.
Hi. Hi, Council. Jen Heimberg. I'm here from sixteen eighty-three Meadhurst Drive in Ypsilanti, four eight one nine eight in Superior Township. Here because we love Fed Up and I'm here in support of Fed Up Ministries. They're doing a lot of good for the community. I personally, myself, have worked with some of the folks there. They're providing showers, they're providing hot meals, they're providing, you know, food for the community regardless of needs as well as what is the word I'm looking for? Dietary restriction, they're very dietary restriction-inclusive. So we love Fed Up. I am here to support them. So looking forward to council supporting the resolution for their funding. Thank you.
You. Please come.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Tia Johnson. I'm standing in support of one twenty-four Peace Plaza as a lifelong resident of Ypsilanti. I don't think we've ever seen anything like this. And I've seen so far in just a small time what one twenty-four Peace Plaza has done for the tenants. What they've done for the community around them. And I see for the long run, it'll be a benefit for the city. I'm in support of one twenty-four Peace Plaza. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who is physically in the audience who would like to address council before I move to Zoom? Is there anyone on Zoom acting clear?
Cheryl Farmer, you have three minutes to address council.
Hi, thanks for seeing my raised hand. I hope you can hear me because I have not been able to hear anything. I speak in opposition to Resolution one forty-nine, which would authorize $50,000 for Fed Up Ministries in partnership with efforts to support our most vulnerable population. That was a quote. All of us in Washtenaw County pay taxes to the county to cover the cost of specific required functions. County functions include social services. So did you know that Fed Up Ministries received a grant of $40,000 from the Washtenaw County Commission a few weeks ago? Now, all of us in Ypsilanti pay taxes to the city to cover the cost of specific required functions and city functions do not include social services. But they do include maintaining important departments like Fire Police, Planning, DPW. We also have to repair streets and bridges and we're on the verge of bankruptcy and the Cross Street Bridge is in dire need of repair. It's on the list for an eighty-twenty federal match. Our twenty percent of the match is $6 million. So when our project comes up to repair the Cross Street Bridge, will we have the match money? Can you imagine the impact on residents and businesses if the Cross Street Bridge had to be closed indefinitely because we didn't have the match money? When we're this short of money, is it fiscally responsible to pay twice for social services? I don't think so. Can you imagine, let's see, in addition, in addition, I'd like to say that Fed Up Ministries and Growing Hope were not good neighbors last summer. If you live or work or own a business in the downtown or are a resident of the adjacent historic South Side neighborhood, you lived through hell last summer because of the activities of these groups. And I can provide you with copies of the police reports if you'd like of open drug selling, using overdoses, open alcohol use, drunken brawls, heavy panhandling, to the point of assault. You get the picture. So in conclusion, I hope you will all vote no on the resolution to give Fed Up Ministries $50,000 or any other sum. Thank you. Now, secondly, quickly, speaking as a physician, I also oppose Resolution one fifty that would make the investigation and arrest of persons in possession of a controlled substance the lowest law enforcement priority. Every intervention is an opportunity for the user to get help and get clean. So interventions save lives. And in cities where this has been tried, overdose deaths rose. So be very careful of unintended consequences. This probably deserves a lot more study before you even vote on it. Thank you. Now, I'd just like to say that I have not been able to hear anything as someone zooming into this meeting. I just raised my hand in hopes that you would see it. And I'm speaking now in hopes that you can hear me. But I can't hear you at all. And if I can't, others can't because I already tested my audio system on my computer. So it's not me and I hope you can fix it soon because I'd also like to speak on the issue of the PUD. Thank you.
So you cannot hear me, Mayor Farmer?
I can hear that. Hello?
Yes.
Yes, I just heard that. That's the first I've heard.
Okay.
Bits and pieces here and there, but that's it.
Alrighty. Well, thank you. I'm glad that it's working.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, no problem. Is there anyone else on Zoom? No other hands? All right. Anyone else in the audience that has not, please come and then Steve.
My name is CJ Clark. I am not a resident of Ypsilanti, but just to point a correction on Cheryl's comments, the $40,000 received by Fed Up was two and a half years ago from Washtenaw County, not last week or in the last couple of weeks. And I believe the $50,000 that you're considering is set aside for social services. So just keep that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Pierce?
Good evening. My name is Steve Pierce and I live at one eighteen South Washington here in Ypsilanti. I've been a resident of twenty-five years, not as long as some of you have. So I'm still sometimes the new guy. I wanted to stand up and speak up in, I can't believe it's going to get three ups in this one, in favor of Fed Up and their application before you this evening. We have seen a marked difference in what's going on in Growing Hope and Fed Up in the past year. And it is, it is much better. Is it perfect? No. There are still some problems and I hope that we can, working together as neighborhoods in the city and with the two nonprofits, we can address those things. But I think it's worth supporting this. I would like to remind, or not to remind, but to suggest to council that with this type of grant funding and all other grant funding, it is important to make sure that all permits, applications, operations and all those things are complete and are being run according to the city rules and regulations before we give money to other organizations and grants such as that. So please do the due diligence and make sure that that is all lined up. And if it is, please support Fed Up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other hands, then I will close public comment. So thank you all so much. And we'll move into our ordinances and Councilmember King, you have our first ordinance fourteen thirty-five.
I was just gonna ask too, if we could just do a check to make sure everybody online can hear us. You know, if people can just give us a thumbs up or something.
Sure. If folks online can hear us, can you give us a thumbs up? All right, there's a hand. Okay. Wonderful. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the Human Relations Commission voted in April twenty twenty-four to adopt a fair chance access to housing ordinance. And whereas the Human Relations Commission recommends that such an ordinance would give previously incarcerated individuals and individuals with a criminal history, the fair chance to compete for rental housing and to reside with the family members and others. And whereas the Human Relations Commission recommends that council review and adopt the fair chance housing ordinance. And now therefore be resolved that the city, that Ypsilanti City Council approved the fair chance access to housing.
Moved and supported? All right. Hi, Katie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry. So the commission felt that such an ordinance as this would give previously incarcerated individuals and individuals with criminal history the opportunity to compete for rental housing and to reside with family members and others. So we modeled this ordinance very similarly off of the one that Ann Arbor has passed for fair chance housing. The purpose, you'll notice, is to give previously incarcerated individuals and others, individuals with criminal history, the opportunity to compete for rental housing and or reside with family members and others. Such housing is crucial for the success in reintegration into the community, obtaining gainful employment and reducing homelessness. So happy to take questions.
All right, thank you. Are you all right if I open the public hearing first? Let me take our questions after. Okay, so the public hearing, and if fair chance housing is not open, if there are members of the audience who would like to speak to council on this specific ordinance, please raise your hand. Kat? You have three minutes.
Okay, hello, Pat Leighton, Ward Three resident. First of all, thank you for putting this together, Katie and staff and council for as a Human Relations Commissioner, I was really excited to put this forward with everyone. And last council meeting, I mentioned that this was a three-pronged approach and this is the one that I think is important. And I think when we think about housing first and when we think about the current ordinance in our Human Relations Ordinance that allows for discrimination of people with criminal convictions currently. And whenever we think about interventions beyond traditional treatment and thinking more about interventions as in mental health treatment, drug checking equipment, harm reduction services, housing. There's a plethora of violence intervention. And also I just want to allow the space for this ordinance to continue actually putting forward laws that allow people with criminal conviction histories to be able to apply for housing without having their backgrounds used against them, which is what the ordinance that we have currently right now was initially intended to do back in twenty twenty. And just so people know how the rental application process will work, should council pass this ordinance. Is that first, there will be an initial screening where the housing provider will screen the rental applicant for a standard criteria. The second is then if the housing provider decides to move forward with a qualified applicant, they will issue a conditional offer of Tennessee. And then following that is their background check. So after issuing a conditional offer, a housing provider may choose to run a criminal background check if they want. However, they can only consider felony convictions within the previous three years for any arson or human trafficking and whether the applicant is required to be on the register, register for the sex offender registry. Which again, there are state and federal laws that are in place for that. So there is no risk of people who are having criminal sexual conduct to a child being, receiving jobs at daycares or housing. And then the next thing is an individualized assessment. If a background check reveals any of the above offenses, the housing provider must conduct an individualized assessment. And then following that, this means that they must consider various factors related to the offense such as severity, age, at the time of the offense, and whether the offense was connected to a rental property which the applicant previously lived. So again, this would be an important ordinance change and help our residents from experiencing discrimination in the city. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Yeah, right on. Who would like to address this topic? All right, anyone online?
If anyone online would like to make comment, please raise your hand.
All right, seeing none, Councilmember King, you can close the public hearing.
Resulted by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, that the public hearing to consider ordinance number fourteen thirty-five entitled An Ordinance to Amend Article Three Discrimination of Chapter Fifty-eight Human Relations by adding a Fair Chance Housing Section be officially closed. That's a move.
Move and support. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, back to council. Questions, discussion, comments?
I said definitely.
Oh, okay. Any, Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. Oh, okay. So oh, this is the wrong note. So I just wanted to say that we did get an email from someone who works with the State or National Realtors Group about this. About this ordinance change. And I just wanted to name, so one of the things they said was that, oh, we think that this should be more like the one in New Jersey that has these different kinds of exemptions and qualifications in it. And so I just want to say that based on these exemptions that are in this, it actually works very similarly to that in terms of relaying back to state and federal law and certain things that will come into question under those things. So I just wanted to say that in terms of with the conditional approval and things of that sort. And the things that I think that this doesn't have, that that New Jersey one does have, which I disagree with, which is kind of, which calls out these different classes or different kinds of criminal backgrounds that would raise question, which include things like murder, et cetera. And so I, which I think isn't necessarily, you know, come to term in terms of thinking about when people need housing. So I just wanted to mention that. It's something that I did look into. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment, questions, discussion from council? Councilmember McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a sense for how many of these types of ordinances have been passed around the country and and I think referencing perhaps what my colleague was asking about or mentioning? What has been the impact, if any, on on firms that rent property owners, those that rent property to others? If you know.
I, yeah, I did not have the chance to do that kind of research on the topic before this, before the meeting.
I always have some, some concern about unintended consequences with things like that. These are, I think, are certainly well-intentioned to come from a good place. I'm trying to better understand something that one of the speakers, Ms. Leighton, I believe, mentioned specifically to arson. So can you, can you enlighten me and the council members on exactly what if someone has arson in their background have been convicted of an arson offense? When, is it simply a three-year look back? Is that it? And after that? they would no longer be something that could be considered when making a determination about rental?
So, right now, I'm actually searching the ordinance for the word arson because I was trying to find that specific spot, and I don't actually see that in there at the moment. So, unless anybody else can see the spot where it's referring to arson specifically in this, in this language, I don't see it at the moment.
Well, if this is anything that Mr. Barr can opine on.
Hold his mic down. So, I think he has, he wants to say it right if he did. Yeah, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Your Honor. In answer to the question, this federal government has a Fair Housing Act, has been in existence for some period of time, and it effectively prohibits discrimination in housing. And there are a series of protected classes of people or of classes that cannot be discriminated against on sex, weight, height, different things like that. But this ordinance does, and there has been a movement through the country to do it, is to add a separate protected class of people with criminal records. And the reason you don't find arson when you look at the draft ordinance is because it's not there, but it refers to other state and federal laws and ordinances, laws that do describe some of the exceptions to the prohibition against discrimination. And it does allow some discrimination, as the speaker said, against sexual predators, murderers, and arsonists. There are some other parts of it that describe those things that aren't obviously evident when you look at the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
One perhaps final comment. I think the devil's often in the details. And so, of understanding which of these sort of situations are would be relevant and would be something that a landlord could allow, could be allowed to use in making decisions, and what that couldn't be allowed to use in making decisions. To me, it's a, it's a, it's a big deal. And as someone who's a victim of arson, I'm particularly sensitive to that one.
Yeah. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have your hand up?
I did. I have a few questions, and then some housekeeping stuff in terms of consistency of language. Looking at Section eleven, Individual Means of Human Beings, Individual Means of Human Being. But there's a permanent supportive housing. And I didn't have time to look at the code, but I thought we had removed that category from our zoning. Maybe Josh or Andy can speak to that.
Permanent supportive housing.
Okay, so if we get rid of that language in here, yeah, it's just inconsistent with our, with our other codes. So, so Section eleven, and I think it comes up in someplace else as well. The following page after that, in Requirements for Housing Providers, you know, we got into the ambiguity and reasonable conversation at the, at the previous meeting. And here, the word prominently comes up, and I'm just like wondering if we need to define that in some way, or just leave it as is and spare ourselves a half hour conversation. But I don't know if that, you know, what that means to the, the, the housing provider. There's a Section four on Page eleven of the original. I'm looking at an old version here. It says, nothing in this section shall be construed to apply to a public housing agency as defined by blank, including the Ann Arbor Housing Commission and its affiliated entities. I'm just wondering if that is an oversight on editing and/or if they are intended to be included in our ordinance.
I left it in. I wondered if we want, because I know that they do, that they, I left it in because I know that they, they do the section, the vouchers and things like that. And so, I wasn't sure if it did in fact still need to be in. So, it could be an oversight, but I, that's why I left it in.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Happy to leave it to, to Mr. Barr whether that it needs to be removed.
Looks like Mr. Barr has something else to say.
Right, this ordinance was crafted from the Ann Arbor ordinance, and it does have exceptions for federal housing regulations for low-income housing. And those regulations do not follow the this particular policy. They have a number of exceptions that prohibit convicted people with a criminal record from having access to public housing in the federal-supported housing.
This is basically, so does this also apply to Ypsilanti Housing Commission?
I believe it would, yes.
And then the next section, it says, nothing in this section shall be construed to apply to permanent supportive housing. So, if we can get that adjusted with the other codes, that would be good. In the complaint procedure, we've heard from Kat, excuse me, bringing forward from the HRC, a change in the complaint procedure. But as this is written, it says, as the complaint about violation should be made in writing to the city attorney, which kind of follows the current code. But then there's some self-referencing in Section two of that so that the city attorney would refer the complaint to the city attorney for further investigation. I don't know how we clear that up and yeah, I guess that's it. On section after that, conciliation agreements, there's a reference to persons, and I'm just checking to make sure that that is persons or individuals to be consistent in what the intent of that, that was. That's all the questions I have. I just want to say that, you know, I also read that email and was nonplussed by the realtors' arguments. But I think this is good. You know, if we can, if we can clean up those things, I'd, I'd be in favor of this.
Yeah, so that, those things, so the, referring it to the city attorney, so that af- after the HRC ordinances were for you, I had, I had the benefit of being able to hear the conversation and then also get Mr. Barr's recommendations of HRC being an oversight body. And so, left in that it would go to the city attorney, not to the HRC. So, dissimilar to how Ann Arbor does theirs. And so, just was an oversight that I left Section C in that, of that part in there. So, I would pull that out, yes.
Thank you.
All right. That's all? Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah.
For the comments discussion? All right, well, seeing none, I think our job, please call the roll.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
No.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
All right, that passes in first reading, so it'll come back to us. Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen, you have our next ordinance.
One thirty-six.
I didn't vote first, but I did.
Oh, you know.
Okay.
All right, so there's one thirty-seven on the, oh, sorry, never mind. Resolution number twenty twenty-four one thirty-six, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the city has an interest in protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and whereas the city has a master plan that reflects policy goals of the city, including the guiding value that anyone, no matter what age or income, can find a place to call home in Ypsilanti. And whereas the applicant one twenty-four Peace Plaza LLC intends to provide public benefits in this development, and whereas the planning commission recommends the city council approve the site condominium and planned unit development for the site known as one twenty-four and one twenty Pearl, with the property's legal description in the attached ordinance, and now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council adopt the ordinance entitled Planned Unit Development and Site Con- Site Condominium Mixed Use and Multi-Family Development at one twenty-four Pearl Street and one twenty Pearl, with conditions as recommended in the request for legislation memo in first reading. A nice move.
Court, it's been moved and supported.
Good evening, Josh.
Hi, good evening. So, John, wait. For the Zoom meeting so that I can share that presentation that I told you about. I'm not seeing it on the I apologize. Sorry about that.
I expect you could find it through the city website on our public hearing notice.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I did go to the agenda, so I didn't see it on. Oh, okay, so get the
There's gonna be a link.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. All right, it's just loading the agenda right now. Okay, so I think I'm in the meeting. Good question. It's either gonna be City of Ypsilanti or Josh. Okay, perfect. All right, so I'm gonna share my screen. Host disabled. Did it, it's saying that the disable, I'm not able to.
I was gonna say, you might wanna.
Okay. I mean, I can just start right now without sharing my screen, if that's cool. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, so getting, all right, hopefully everyone can, my screen, okay, perfect. So, thank you, everyone. I apologize about that delay. So, at one twenty-four and one twenty Pearl, the applicants by the name of one twenty-four Peace Plaza LLC have proposed a planned unit development. For those of you who do not know what a planned unit development is, a planned unit development is a type of development that encourages innovation in land use and variety in design, layout, and types of structures constructed. It achieves economy and efficiency in the use of land, natural resources, et cetera. It encourages useful open spaces and provides better housing, employment, and shopping opportunities. It encourages compatibility of design and uses between neighboring properties. It facilitates the preservation and reuse of historic structures, and it encourages the development, it encourages development that is overall consistent with the city's master plan. This, that's just a general list of what a PUD can be. PUDs allow for flexibility in regulation. The state of Michigan gives the city the ability to create zoning regulations regarding planned unit development. Hold on, let me just like that. Yeah, regarding planned unit developments, the city regulates planned unit developments in Article eight, Division one of the zoning ordinance. PUDs are allowed flexibility in the regulation of land development, meaning the proposed development can apply for departures from the zoning ordinance and exchange for higher quality development than what would, what would be created using the conventional zoning regulations with recognizable benefits to the users and community in general. In terms of where we're at, like in terms of the process, you start off with the pre-application conference, which has been completed. You then have the PUD application submitted to the planning department, which has, you know, been completed. Plan, Planning Commission review, public hearing and recommendation to council. And currently, we are now at the first reading for council review, the public hearing and whatnot. So, after we go through, typically, after we go through our first readings, if the PUD is approved, then we would have to publish a zoning map, which I believe would have to be signed three days after approval of the second reading. And then, the applicant will have to record the approval and its records with the Register of Deeds. In terms of one twenty-four dash one twenty Pearl, the site currently has two historic buildings, building one being the Centennial Building, which is a six-story mixed-use building with ground floor, commercial, and offices. Building two is a one-story commercial building. It's three hundred ninety-four square feet. It's incredibly tiny. And that structure is also used for retail. The site itself is point six four seven acres, which also includes a parking lot of forty-four spaces, mostly to the north of the Centennial Building. The site includes two curb cuts on North Washington, two curb cuts on Pearl Street. One is obstructed by an existing stairwell. And the pedestrian, pedestrian access to both buildings is on Pearl Street. For the PUD proposal, both of the existing buildings will be maintained. And they are also proposing a new six-story mixed-use development or building. This will feature fourteen hundred and fifty square feet of retail space. It will include one thousand and sixty-two square feet of residential amenities slash lobby space. There will be sixty residential units, forty of which will be one bedrooms, and twenty will be studios. There is gonna be a rooftop green space, as well as second-floor balconies. We'll have, oh, the second floor will have balconies for the apartments that face the north. There will also be pedestrian access along Washington Street and a parking garage, as well as surface parking spaces to be reconstructed and have, and we will have a small landscaping area added. There will also, the land is proposed to be divided as a site condominium. Basically, a site condominium is a property that has general common elements between, you know, different properties or buildings. But, you know, it's, that's usually recorded through a master deed or an exhibit B. The, the site condominium will include the three building footprints as their own units. Oh, wait, it says right there. It'll include the building, the building footprints as their own units, plus the general common elements as the remaining spaces. For Planning Commission action, the Planning Commission first reviewed the PUD on March twentieth during their meeting, and they ended up postponing the case. And, and on May fifteenth, the Planning Commission ended up reviewing, re-reviewing the PUD and made, and recommended approval with conditions. As you can see, or what was included in the agenda packet, you had the Planning Commission minutes, you have, including the approval of conditions and other attachments, and the RFL and whatnot as part of the attachment. Updates since the Planning Commission meeting. Since the May fifteenth Planning Commission meeting, the applicant and the city have addressed items, especially relating to a few of the Planning Commission's conditions of approval. Revised plan sets have been provided dated five twenty-four twenty-four, which comes into greater compliance with the conditions. The fire department and city attorney have analyzed conditions number four relating to the fire hose lays and have granted preliminary approval of the updated fire protection plan. This condition may be omitted if council wishes. and have granted preliminary approval of the updated fire protection plan, this condition may be omitted, um, if council wishes. And the city attorney has analyzed condition number ten, um, which also may be omitted if council wishes. Um, in terms of recommended action for city council, staff is recommending that city council follow the Planning Commission's approval recommendation with conditions, conditions should be added to ensure total compliance. And because a PUD, a PUD agreement has not been provided by the developer, um, and because a PUD agreement has not been provided by the applicant, staff recommend city council add an approval condition requiring such agreement to be approved at a future date, such agreement should also specify more particular details regarding performance, logistical and administrative items, including but not limited to performance guarantees, waste management, changes, um, to the site or uses, construction staging, um, project completion timelines, items documented on their site, on the site plans and approval requirements for the city's department. And yeah, that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, of course.
Alright, so what we'll do is we'll open the public hearing and then we'll come back to council for a question and discussion.
Okay.
Alright, so if there are any folks in the audience who would like to address council on this particular topic, please raise your hand. And then Mr. Scott. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Steve Pierce and I live at one eighteen South Washington. What's before you tonight is a very complicated issue, uh, that affects a, a big area of this community and a vital area in our downtown. And, uh, I am likely gonna run out of time, and this is what is unfortunate about this process, is that there is so little time to come and talk to both the Planning Commission with three-minute limits and three-minute limits here, so before I run out of time, I'm asking that you please deny this PUD. And the reason that I'm asking you to deny this PUD is because there are two opposing things that are part of this plan. One is a PUD that has a whole bunch of exceptions and conditions for the development, and the reason to do that is because the zoning ordinance doesn't quite allow the developer to do this and that, and so they come up with, um, exceptions or conditions, there's some other terminology that's used for a PUD. And I know a little bit about a PUD because I have one for the, the congregational church that I bought, because we were trying to do a performance base and working on that. So I, I do have a little bit of experience with a PUD and, um, and some things that were said by the planner this evening are not quite right, uh, there, but again, can't address all of those concerns in three minutes. But, so that's a real problem, when you have ten, eleven, twelve, and at one point in time, there were sixteen different deviations from our zoning code. So you're creating all these exceptions in order to shoehorn this plan in here, that's okay, except you have another thing over here, which is brownfield tax credits and other government funding, this is about a twenty-three million dollar project. Uh, you, you, it's hard to get any sort of numbers on here, uh, because the applicant hasn't been forthcoming with, with the numbers. Um, a large chunk of this is coming with government funding, they also are planning, uh, brownfield, which means, um, TIF capture, and so all of the money that's coming to this project is gonna go to pay for cleanup and everything else. And why these two different things, we've got all these exceptions over here for the PUD to try to shoehorn this thing in here. And what is the goal of the brownfield development? It's to redevelopment and opas and other things like that, is to redevelop properties that are not developable because it's too expensive to do the, do the cleanup. Well, part of the reason it's too expensive to do the cleanup is because of all the exceptions that were recreated in the PUD. If you'd built a building that followed our zoning code, much of the other things that they want to do and need to do would not necessarily require the tax increment financing, and, and it's not because of the use they want, it's the use that's allowed. So they've created all these exceptions, and now they're trying to pay for these exceptions through a brownfield. This, as I said, there's forty seconds left and there's about twenty more minutes of stuff, and again, stuff has to be corrected from the planner, that's not quite right either. The last part, though, because this is important, it is very disconcerting to, as a citizen, to hear, oh, we're not going to share with you, the council and the citizens, the PUD agreement, but trust us to negotiate that out later on. Well, we've been burned on this before with Water Street, we've been burned on this in other, the China stuff, we'll get this later, no, get it right now. So if there is any discussion about moving this forward, get that agreement first before you approve this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Mr. Scott. Good evening.
And to the council, and thank you all for allowing us to come tonight, my name is Derek Scott and I represent one twenty-four Peace Plaza, the development, uh, that is under consideration for tonight, and I just wanna first start by saying thank you for, um, the, the, the consideration and the support uh, from, uh, both the city and council over the last, uh, year on, on the project. Um, I just wanna just kinda reiterate our commitment to the city around, um, both the preservation of the existing Centennial Plaza building and the tenants that are there, as well as, um, producing some affordable workforce, uh, housing here for the city. Um, it's our endeavor to continue to work toward driving, uh, towards the additional affordability, I think we are already digging really deep. I do wanna highlight that we're not a light tech, um, developer, um, there's a lot of the barriers that exist in the state of Michigan and other states that prevent, uh, historically, um, smaller firms and especially minority firms from participating, Mishda's doing some things to correct that. Uh, but, um, it's oftentimes difficult, so we're appreciative for, uh, partners that have stepped up like the Ann Arbor Community Foundation to provide, uh, some support to do affordable housing, as well as, um, the two million dollars, little over two million we received from the state, uh, ME, ME DC funding because of the level of affordability that we're trying to target here. So we've gotten really creative with, uh, a lot of the financing sources in, in addition to our own capital, uh, that we're putting up and investing here uh, to continue to see that, and then we're also working right now with the Federal Home Loan Bank, um, to drive towards some additional affordability and hope that we can be successful, uh, in the application that we have before them now, um, to meet that deadline. Uh, we see our project, um, as really being affordable to the, the average teacher, the nurse, the, the, the firefighter folks that we have learned are commuting on average more than forty-eight minutes, an average commute, uh, into the city of Ypsilanti, such as one of the, the local police officers I just spoke to, uh, who was excited to hear about our development, but he lives in Inkster and he's been commuting back and forth from Inkster for three years and would love to, uh, rent a unit in our space, and so I told him I'd sign him up. Um, but, um, those are the type of folks we're trying to target, those that live and work here already but can't afford, uh, to stay here in the city, um, and find quality, quality affordable housing. Uh, we see, uh, benefits with our transit amenities such as car sharing, uh, free AATA bus, uh, passes that will, that every, uh, resident will have access to. So we're reducing, uh, transportation costs as well, which is thirty percent of the cost burden for households, and so Mishda is really excited about, um, our project from that perspective with driving down costs, and then we're also working with DTE and other environmental consultants on our solar and our green, uh, sustainability initiatives that will drive down utility costs, uh, quite substantially in our development. Ultimately, I'd like just to reiterate, um, the timeline, uh, here, we're hopeful that we can bring this forward, but it really, really, uh, depends on being able to move forward uh, exponentially so we don't lose our financing on this project, so thank you again for the consideration tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Yes, please come.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is, my name is Elizabeth Rogers and I am legal counsel for one-two-four Peace Plaza. And I just want to put a few things on the record and address some of the comments that have been made, uh, this evening. I, I've been a lawyer for twenty-four years and I frequently refer to myself as a dirt nerd. I have had the pleasure of working in the largest municipality in the state and their legal department, and so I'm well aware and still very enamored by the tools that are available to developers who want to develop in cities where traditionally underserved communities reside. The truth of the matter is that capital is a problem, development of this size is expensive, and so PUDs is just one way in which a development literally can be tailor-made. The types of incentives like brownfields are the type of public-private partnerships that are encouraged and that are necessary in order for developments like this to be successful, because developers just don't have the capital alone and municipalities are limited in terms of how they can spend public dollars, this is the perfect marriage. I was in Sydney, Australia in March, and they are talking about public-private partnerships there, and they look to the US as a model for that. So what the developer is requesting you to approve tonight is standard, it's not sinister, it's not that someone is getting some benefit that they shouldn't otherwise get, the community benefits from these types of public-private partnerships and you are in the unique position that you can approve it. As far as the PUD agreement is concerned, again, it's not a sinister move, it's that there still are some things that are being worked out in the site plan and we don't want to put a PUD agreement together that the developer cannot meet or that is not required to meet. So we want to make sure that the PUD agreement is accurate and accuracy is important, we don't want to make a promise that we then reneg on. And so again, we just are asking for your approval that this will be able to be moved forward to the second reading and hopefully we can see an incredible development that you all and the community will benefit. It's pretty cool when you drive by and see bricks and mortar in the ground from something that once started as just a concept on paper. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council, and if not, if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to speak to us on this topic? Is it my turn? Somebody wave your hand at me if you can hear me. We can.
We can hear you.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, um, Cheryl Farmer, uh, two fourteen North Huron Street, I forgot to say that last time. Um, I attended the May meeting of the Planning Commission where this proposed development was discussed. So you read in your packet that quote, the Planning Commission was provided two courses of action, one being approval with conditions and the other being denial. Um, actually, there was a third course of action presented, the city planner in attendance all but begged the Planning Commission to send this project back to the planning department because there were still sixteen unresolved issues. The chair, however, declined the planner's suggestion on behalf of the commission, even when another member of the commission reminded him that there was a pending lawsuit over an easement, suggested they wait until that was resolved to see if the developer would get clear title to the land, still the chair wanted to forge ahead. The chair then took, took the, then took the lead on each of the sixteen unresolved issues, saying to the other members, some variation of, well, I don't have any problems with this one, does anyone have a problem with this one? And by and large, the commissioners were silent as the chair raced through the sixteen unresolved issues, waiting most of them off as unimportant. In each instance, the developer was proposing doing something less than what the city was required, requiring. So our Planning Commission chair couldn't have been more pro-developer, but that's not the role of the Planning Commission, is it, it's to be pro-community. So the question for the commissioners should be, will this development as proposed be an asset to the community in the long term? And if not, then they can re, recommend the developer give tweaks to assure that it is, and that's not what happened with this proposed development in our Planning Commission meeting, it's so disappointing. So. Then when you read about the nine departures. Oh, that, that's that, so tonight in your packet, when you read that the applicant applied for a handful of departures, all approved by the Planning Commission, please keep in mind the way the chair kinda railroaded his commissioners to pass this developer's proposal through before the city planners had finished their work. Then when you read about the nine departures listed in, listed in your packet document, please ask yourselves, how do those relate to the sixteen unresolved issues? Why is this project coming to council tonight when the developer has, this is a quote, the developer has not yet submitted a draft PUD agreement to the city, so why aren't we allowing our professional planning staff to do their job? Instead, we get tonight's convoluted situation where the council is being asked, asked to approve a PUD and the draft has not even been submitted. We want good quality new housing to be built, not substandard, that would be bad for the community and bad for the new residents who will live there. So please table this item, send the proposal back to your planners, they need to receive and study the draft PUD that the developer needs to send them, so they can assure that you have a PUD agreement to consider that dots all the i's and crosses all the t's, I do not understand why this is being rushed through. Allow your planning professionals to protect you from rushing into regret. Thank you very much, and I'm going to leave you night, tonight because I cannot hear anything, so I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that would like to address council? On this matter.
Yes, we have one more.
Alright. Good evening.
Hello, uh, my name's Rod Johnson and I live at three-ten North Grove, I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. I, I guess my basic concerns revolve around the number of exceptions that the developer wants. I, I, I have experience with PUDs and I've never seen one with this many involved, and, and you should know that, that when I, when I read the report, there was a lot of red ink and tho, those are red flags, that means down the line, at some point, because of you're backing away from your own ordinances, there's gonna be issues because things are gonna happen that you don't expect because of conditions that you're gonna deal with are less than desirable. Um, so that, that's quite troubling to me, and I, I, I would like the, the, at least the Planning Commission to come up with a, a better detailed explanation as to why they're just waiving all of these. The other thing, this is a PUD and the PUD is an agreement between you and a developer, it's give and take, and that comes from both sides. So the developer is asking you to give a lot of stuff here, and you get to actually ask things in, 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 uh, in lieu of that, for one thing, is it a developer committing, uh, uh, gonna give money to our, our housing trust? I think if you, if you look at the Ann Arbor PUDs, you'll be astounded at how much the developers are, are willing to pay to, to go around their own, um, uh, ordinances here, and that's an important thing. The developer is coming to you without an actual, uh, delivery of what they expect out of the PUD and expecting you to just read this through on the first, I, I, I have a lot of red flags about that myself. I think you ought to sit down with the developer, get a much better, uh, an agreement if you can, and make sure that the city of Ypsilanti gets taken care of because of the developers coming in, need to partner with us, not just take our money, not just take our tax breaks, but, but to partner, actually partner with us and the community and make sure that everybody is made whole here. And, and finally, a shout out to, to the people to the north who are being asked to give up some of their land maybe, and I know, not sure how that's gonna work, and another one out to, to Ted Badgero over at, uh, the Ypsilal House, that, that guy is a treasure, he started the Michigan craft brewing industry here, he's a treasure here, so whatever happens, he needs to be taken care of and making sure that he's not feeling that he's being just kicked to the curb here, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bar?
Mr. Johnson, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Mr. Bar, is there anyone else online?
Kathleen. Good evening. Good evening, council and mayor, sorry, I had to step out, um, I wanna say, these are all great questions that people are bringing as far as what the developer will offer, what the city will offer, et cetera, and I think this is what, um, can just uplift the importance of this community benefits ordinance that has since sunset. Um, that should be part of this development for sure, there's been some news articles about, um, the different AMI range and target area median income they have, which doesn't meet the needs of the people who live in the city. Um, the city of Ypsilanti's area median income is less than half of the county as a whole. Um, so I think that this needs to go through a community benefits ordinance process, and I hope that that can be part of the discussion whenever that gets, um, when that gets talked about on this agenda today. Um, so I just ask that that be a consideration before voting on this, just to make sure that the people of residence who are part of this community can be part of the discussion for this as well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
There's not.
Alright, um, Mayor Fortem, please close the public hearing.
Resolution number twenty-two-four dash one-three-seven, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the public hearing to consider an ordinance entitled Planned Unit Development and Site Condominium mixed use and multifamily development at one twenty-four Pearl Street and one twenty Pearl be officially closed, nice and move.
Support. It's been moved and supported, in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, the public hearing is closed, um, so welcome back, Josh, because we're gonna have questions. And I, I'll start by just asking the one that's being repeated often, um, why are we, why is this coming to us now with all of those conditions still outstanding?
So, um, our ordinance has a requirement that after six, like, you have to, council has to make a ruling, um, within sixty days of Planning Commission approval. And so this is the last, uh, meeting to have the first reading and then complete the, the second reading within sixty days.
Gotcha, so the timetable issue here. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, I'll yield, uh, other questions from council. Councilwoman McLean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could I ask, this could be a question for a number of people, Josh, you may know it. When did the issue of the easement on the property to the north, when did that first come up in public deliberations?
You're talking about for like the Hoesley or?
To the north. Or the, to the north, the Mowers?
Oh, the prescribed easement. That came up, I believe, I don't remember the exact date, but it was in February. I started having people email me, public comments for the Planning Commission. And actually, sorry, no, I.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eve, but please don't interrupt.
I believe the prescribed easement actually might have been in March. Not March, no, it was February, because that's when I got an email from their lawyer asking, not asking, informing us of the lawsuit. Like, it was a few hours before the Planning Commission meeting in February.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, I first heard about it in February. It came up at the HTC meeting. So it may have come up in other places, as Mr. Pierce said. It may have come up even sooner than that. But it's been at least five months, maybe seven months. And here we are, and that's still not resolved. I believe it's the case that the owners, the Mowers of the property to the north, have brought legal action to defend their easement. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Is it also the case that the developers have countersued the Mowers?
I believe that is correct, yeah.
Is there anybody else that can answer that, perhaps legal counsel?
Mr. Bar, thank you.
My understanding of the matter is that the Mowers brought the suit, and they sued the corporation and some individual members. And the developer answered the claim and then filed a motion to dismiss the individual members. But their attorney is here, and I'd suggest she might be able to give a complete answer of the question.
Thank you, Mr. Bar. That's what I was going to ask. We have the developer here and legal counsel. So if you all would like to approach.
Oh, bless you.
Bless you. To answer some of these questions for us, that'd be wonderful. Good evening again.
Good evening again. Elizabeth Rogers, Legal Counsel for one-two-four Peace Plaza. It is correct that one-two-four Peace Plaza has filed counterclaims against the plaintiffs in this matter.
Madam Mayor, why?
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 Because the defendants believe that they are entitled to file counterclaims, and so they have filed those counterclaims. They're just exercising their remedies. One of those counterclaims is tortuous interference with a business contract because of the actions that the Mowers have taken. We are happy to provide a copy of the counterclaim if you would like.
I would like, thank you.
We will send it to you. Happy to do it.
This next question is, may also, Madam Mayor, have, be for you, so maybe you want to stay in the, nearer the microphone. There are currently some barricades that I believe are on the easement as we speak. Is that accurate?
I'm so sorry, could you repeat that?
There, I believe, are some barricades that are on the easement as we speak.
Yes, that is correct.
That is correct. Are those there legally?
Are those what?
Are those there on the easement legally?
Would you like to comment, Joe?
Manager Joe, somebody?
Provide some clarity, but I will say that the building department manager has sent a letter to the, to the developer indicating that they have to remove those barricades within fourteen days, the certain code sections that are violated. I think Mr. Myers can probably better speak towards.
Don't go.
Okay, yeah. That's what a letter has been sent, indicating that it's from the. Yes, we are there. Yep, we are.
So is it fair to say that they are not legally there?
Can you please speak into the mic because it is hard to hear? Thank you.
Can you please demote folks online? Thank you.
So. We are concerned about the legality of those barricades, and that's why the letter.
So to Developer Council, why are those barriers there?
The first thing I want to do is just make sure that the record is clear. Your question was about whether barricades are located within the easement.
Yes.
There has been no determination that there is an easement there. So the property that has, that I think you're referring to is actually the developers. It is owned by the developers, and that property is included in the deed from the seller to the developer. So there is no easement from our perspective. So I just want to make sure that the record is clear in that regard. There is no easement. That's the subject of the dispute, and there has been no adjudication of that question. So we won't refer to it here as an easement since it is developer's property. So to your question as to why those water field plastic containers are there, there are contractors who are regularly on the site. And so there needs to be a clear delineation between property that is owned by the developer and property that is not. And that is what those plastic containers are meant to mark.
The rest of my questions, is it okay to ask to refer to them as alleged easement or questionable easement? What would you like me to call them?
Questionable, alleged, is completely up to you. I just, I don't, we're not conceding that it's an easement, so I appreciate that.
So for how long has this alleged easement been used for purposes of parking or any other purpose related to the building to the north of the subject property?
That is a factual question that is in dispute, and it is our position that it will be adjudicated in court when facts can be presented, but not here.
Is it longer than fifteen years?
Again, that is a factual question that is in dispute. It's the subject of the litigation, and we believe that the court is the proper place to adjudicate that question, not in this public forum.
Would you care to make any comment as to why this hasn't been resolved through non-court action after seven months?
Well, for my part in this, I can tell you that we spoke to Legal Counsel for the Mowers prior to the time that the Mowers filed their complaint. And we made, we, being the defendants, made a good faith effort to try to come to some resolution. From Legal Counsel for the Mowers, when we talked about an amount that would be appropriate based on fair market value, Legal Counsel for the Mowers said to me that the amount that his client would come back at in terms of the acceptance of an offer would be so extravagant that my client wouldn't be able to meet that amount. And Mr. Scott can speak about the conversations that he had with Mr. Mauer with respect to the comment about this being a twenty million dollar development. You can come better than fair market value. That's part of the reason why we file counterclaims. From our perspective, this looks like a shakedown. And with regard to demarcating the boundary, the parking that was happening on developer's property is what has been stopped. That was developer's property, and the Mowers were collecting a parking fee from parking that was not on their property. It was on the developer's property.
Did I hear you say a shakedown? Was that, was that the term you used?
From our perspective, from the comments that came from the Mowers, this is reminiscent of a shakedown.
I'm sure, my final question. Is there any intent on the part of the developer to remove those barriers so that trash can be taken care of on that property? I was there at six forty-five tonight. There's no way for any vehicle to get in to take care of the trash that's on that property.
It's my understanding that to the extent that trash can't be picked up from the property, we certainly are willing to have the conversations to ensure that trash can be removed.
The barriers would have to be removed to do that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much.
April Ten.
The answers to the previous questions are problematic for me. You referred to one question as a factual question and refused to answer it, but then you answered another question that was a factual question that should have been excluded from your answer. And you also gave your opinion of how the conversation went without the Mowers being here. So you got into this in the Planning Commission, and it didn't, it didn't go well. So I would like to caution us from asking those questions about, you know, it also got brought up in the Planning Commission that it was not within the, the powers of the Planning Commission to adjudicate this, this easement, supposed easement or contested easement. So. I just want to draw attention to that. I've got a lot of questions about this. You know, overall, I look at this, you know, this property, the proposal for housing in that, in that space, you know, the size and trying to match in a modern way, the architecture of the Centennial Building, and, and I like that. I really like that. And you know, I think that having more housing downtown is a goal to be working towards. So I like the general layout of that. I have some issues with the departures. I was at the Planning Commission, so I've heard all of this multiple times. So I understand what was going on. There was a comment from former Mayor Farmer about, you know, the way that meeting was run and the number of departures that were here previously. And there were seventeen, and the good folks sitting over here that are assisting our staff did send it back to, to the Planning Commission and say, you know, this is something beyond what they should be dealing with. Sixteen things that were then left in their court as opposed to being taken up by the commission. And I think they went back and they addressed that. So I think they responded to Andy and Julia's request to do that. So the statement by Mayor Farmer was a little inaccurate. So I just wanted to put that out there. Having said that, I like the general idea. I've sat through all these proceedings and been very curious as to why this, this proposed building has been designed all the way out to the limits of the property. A lot of these, these departures and much of the conversation has been about, you know, the easements to the east, you know, with Trinity, the easement, alleged easement to the north. But the simple question, why take it there? You know, this is, this is urban development. And I've heard answers before, but, you know, it could have been designed to not have to have those, those departures at all. And some of these are just ridiculous. I mean, the, the parking, you know, you know, one comment during the Point and Planning Commission was, well, everywhere else in the world, this is the case. And I was like, well, should have paid attention to what is here. And so that was, that was stated with kind of a condescension. And I, and I, you know, took, took offense to that. So, you know, I realize that we are a small town, and this is, this is turning into a development that may, may fit with a larger urban area that is built out to the exact dimensions of the thing. But that didn't have to be the case. So I, I, I look at that and I go, well, what was the impetus for, for making that so? And then needing to have all the exceptions? And that's a rhetorical question. But I have a concern that the developer has not submitted a draft PUD agreement. You know, even a draft, you know, you made a comment earlier that, that, you know, you didn't want to get involved in a waste of time for something that wasn't going to be accurate. But, you know, I think at every state of this development, there's been something that has taken this back and forth and out. And there's always been this, this sense of urgency in terms of the funding for this. And, and to me, if there was that sense of urgency, then this would have been brought forward better prepared. And at every time, you know, staff, city staff has been working on this diligently with you. I know that the County Brownfield has been working diligently with you. And, and the overall sense is that you show up unprepared. And I, and I have issue with that. So, you know, the urgency of this, this is brought before us before, urgency to, to, you know, get this going, which was a false narrative for the, for the securing the funding. And so that wasn't the case. It came before us before with that urgency, and it wasn't the case. So A, I'd like to see a draft of the PUD agreement. There's a lot of stuff here that could be lost in the details, and I'd like to see that. There's some simple things, like some, some documents say it's a five-story building. Some say it's a six, you know, it's like, you know, how tall is this building? Is it six or is it five? Your engineers, DEC, say it's a five-story building. The other documents say it's six. The pictures show it's six. Why would the engineers not want to know what's going on with this? Simple, simple thing. On page eighteen of our packet, and under item fifteen, the PUD agreement shall be reviewed and approved by City Council prior to engineering and building permit, the PUD agreement. And it says may, and I would like to say that that should say shall. Also specify terms and details related to performance logistical and administrative items, including but not limited to, so forth. Some of the drawings, you know, there's been various things from, from our staff, inconsistencies in the drawings. One of the main things I have is, in our packet, we have a blank agreement with Trinity Health. You know, it was said in the, in the memo that there was, you know, there was agreement in place with, with Trinity Health for the easement on the east side. But we don't have that document. And why isn't the document, and why isn't the signed agreement in our, in our packet? Because that's another loose end that has not, has not been resolved. We get into the, the memo, and maybe this is a question for staff, but in, in general, this is the memorandum for June eighteenth by Josh. But also, you know, there's a, there's the dimensions of the fire truck, you know, oversight, I don't know what that is. There's a lot of things here. So in the, in the trash pickup, there's a, there's a statement here that, where'd it go? Item nineteen, if refuse pickup is determined to be insufficient by multiple code violations within three hundred and sixty-five days or by documented traffic backups on the public streets during the garbage pickup three process, I'm not sure what that is, the city planner may require increased pickup frequency to ensure proper waste management. This condition should remain. So. If there's traffic backups, how would that be alleviated by more pickups?
So one of our main concerns was that the developers weren't doing a traditional, like, you know, I think it's eight cubic yard dumpster. Essentially, they were just doing the rollout bins. And so we wanted to ensure that if we find that the rollout bins that they're doing at the frequency that they're doing, if that is not sufficient to address the amount of trash being produced by this building, we would like to see additional trash pickup. You know, increasing the frequency throughout the week so that we're not seeing that overflow.
So it's really not going to alleviate any traffic backups. Anyway, I will concede the floor.
That's supposed to say trash backups, sorry.
Trash backups.
Traffic backups.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm like.
Oh, okay. Because I'm like, there'll be more backups. You have something you'd like to share, please? Sorry, Josh, give one second.
I just wanted to address some of the concerns that Councilmember Will Coxon has put on the record. And although you asked the questions and you said that they were rhetorical, we do want to ensure that our record is complete. So for the questions that you asked about the design of the building and why it was built all the way to the lot line, whether there are five or six stories, the architect is here so that he can answer some of those questions. With respect to our comments regarding the lawsuit, our comments were made in response to questions that we were asked directly. And certainly, Council for the Mowers, this is a public hearing, and Council for the Mowers could have appeared and made comments that he had regarding this site. So we did not prevent the Mowers' Legal Counsel or the Mowers from appearing. and speaking for themselves with regard to some of the questions that this body may have had. And so we thank you so much for your questions. With regard to the agreement that you said was, was with respect to Trinity, it's not an agreement. This body requested, or it was requested by the city of Ypsilanti that there be an affidavit in place that memorialized the agreement between Trinity and this developer. We forwarded a copy of the affidavit so that the city would have it to review in case there were changes. We have not heard whether the city has any changes to that affidavit. And since we have not heard that the city has any changes, it can now be signed and notarized. And we will expect that the affidavit will address the city's concern. And that has been our position in quite a few items is that if you take a look at the emails that have been exchanged between the developer and the city, they have been copious. And there have been several questions that have been asked by the developer, several clarifying questions. And there have been instances in which the developer has submitted information, but then there was a change in the requirement. So I don't think it's fair to say that the developer has shown up unprepared. I just think that typical of developments like this, we've gone through the process that every developer goes through with the municipality where maybe at the beginning, we start out with quite a few exceptions and then we work together so that we can resolve the exceptions and so that we can make changes that the city requests and we can get the city to understand a little bit more about the project. And maybe we can see how we can work together and we certainly hope to continue that process here.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Adam Bro with Myevsky Architects. I'm representative for the architects of the development. And I just wanted to clarify a few things since some questions brought up about the design, not only from the council members, but also from some of the public. You know, the first thing, some, I guess the theme that comes up a lot are the amount of conditions on the project. I just want to encourage everyone to, I guess, sort of understand that many of the conditions are related to the, the dimensions of the parking required in Ypsilanti zoning code that go above and beyond what's required in other urban districts. One councilman, I'm sorry if maybe something I said in your previous meeting felt a little condescending. I guess I wanted to speak a little bit about what the word urban means. Because urban doesn't mean large city. It means a walkable multimodal transit oriented developmental style that encourages pedestrian activity, bikeable, obviously transit oriented development. And that's what the master plan of Ypsilanti, the zoning code of Ypsilanti incentivizes. Unfortunately, I would say that some of the parking requirements because of their added dimensions make urban infill development more difficult than it should be. And it goes, kind of runs counter to what the zoning code and the Ypsilanti master plan is meaning to incentivize, which is a more pedestrian oriented development. I would say, I guess, whether lots of us are prepared to live with it or not, the more you incentivize automobile oriented development, the less of pedestrian oriented urban fabric you're able to have. I think that's just a harsh reality that people in the architecture, infrastructure and design industry are facing last twenty or so years and this movement toward a more pedestrian oriented small, medium town, as well as larger cities. So I think if you look at each of the conditions, you'll see that many of them are directed toward those parking dimensions. I think you'll see that some of the other ones are, are related to the fact that we had to start to negotiate through the historic district, you know, because this is a sensitive location, obviously in the center of a historic downtown. The building wants to relate to its neighbors, which is something we tried and worked with the historic district committee to achieve. We believe we've come out a better project because of that process. And I suppose one more thing I'll address is, there seems to be kind of a tendency of some members of the public to suggest that maybe the planning commission were somehow steamrolled or kind of allow us to pass through. I would have to say through my experience that I would absolutely not describe the planning commission in that way. They worked diligently to make sure that the, the spirit of the code is, is met, even when we, even when we, you know, propose all departures or alternative conditions. You know, I would say there's been a lot of give and take here. We have landed in the middle on some issues. Sometimes we, we were able to make them more comfortable with what we were proposing. And other times they were able to convince us and the planning commission, historic, sorry, yes, planning commission, that some of the departures needed to be removed. And that's exactly what happened. That's why we went through multiple planning commission processes to land at the place we are now. And, and all in all, I think we've got a building that serves the community, a building that encourages pedestrian oriented development and a greater revitalized downtown of Ypsilanti. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from council? Councilmember Simmons?
Hello, hello. So I have also lots of things and they're not in any kind of great order. One thing that I wanted to bring forward, which is more just like, I'm trying to understand like the language and lingo and why. Cause of course, when I hear, I've heard condos kind of condominium, I was like, oh wait, this is going to be condo housing. But then I'm looking at this and it seems that it's the, taking the three buildings or three potential, two current two, and then this potential third building and making each of those a condo.
Yeah. So site condominiums are, it's basically a land division, right? It's one of the easiest ways for developers to subdivide land, which is why nearly every, like, new like subdivision that you see is as a site condominium. Basically, site condominiums, they, again, they allow you to subdivide the land, but they maintain these general common elements that, you know, through a master deed and through an exhibit B, you know, are, that's basically the common elements are established.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I remember when I first saw that, and that come, you know, in the question about costs, I was like, oh, maybe that's a little different kind of conversation. We've already answered why we haven't gotten the PUD yet. I think one of, so this, this is another, this is another kind of question, just to like, kind of again, help me and the public understand some of, there's a couple of the parts where you talk about the different specific details that we should be looking into. And that's being recommended to council. And then there's a couple of specific recommendations too, that I wanted to just check in about. But if you could kind of walk us through what those details are that is being recommended, so we kind of better understand.
Yeah. So one of the things that we are for sure recommending is that council in some way recommend, as if they are, if council chooses to approve with conditions, we recommend that you include some type of language in the conditions that you have a development agreement. That way we can ensure that, you know, the development overall is, is reaching the standards that a PUD should be. I am, hold on, I am pulling up my really quick.
Want me to go through them?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah. So there was, let's see here, performance guarantees, waste management, changes to the site or uses, construction staging, project completion timelines, items documented in the site plan themselves, and approval requirements for city departments. And then there were also there, then there was also, I'm just wondering like specifically about this one, where there were some other recommendations and there was this number two, which is no use or occupancy restrictions may be placed upon development beyond already regulated under the requirements of the zoning ordinance. I'm just trying to figure out what that means or why.
Yeah. So in terms of number two, one of the big reasons why we wanted to include that no use or occupancy restrictions may be placed is because in the future, there might be an opportunity where the Centennial Building could be, could transition from offices and commercial to residential. And we don't want to potentially harm the future possibilities of the Centennial Building. And so by not establishing any, like, any types of use restrictions, you know, we allow the site and the Centennial Building to continue. You mentioned the performance guarantees. Correct. Yeah. Could you please? Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor. Thanks for having us here tonight. Just some ideas about performance guarantees generally with a development that has impact to be of a great size like this. You want to make sure we have an appropriate performance guarantee. That's, in other words, a performance bond that has an ability for the city to be protected in case the, heaven forbid that a developer leaves a project halfway up or a site halfway built, that there's a way for the city to restore the site appropriately and safely. So that was an idea with, with performance guarantees if, and just figuring, I mean, there's a lot of details that go into figuring out an agreement like this. It's making sure that both parties are rather satisfied with the language offered. So the specifics could look a couple of different ways. I don't want to lock the city into something right now, but that's just a general idea of why performance guarantees are important.
No, thank you. That's helpful. Then there, with here, there was the waste management you talked about a bit, right? About that. So the changes in site or uses, that's kind of what you were just talking about, the potential for Centennial Plaza. So then these other construction staging and the project completion timeline. So I guess that's kind of, we typically have certain timelines that we want projects to be completed in and what we expect in terms of onsite.
Yeah. And our zoning ordinance does specify that if construction is not diligently pursued after, like if we, yeah, if construction is not diligently pursued for two years, the site plan basically expires.
Thank you. The other questions I have, so I know that the CBO was brought up. I had a question about that in terms of what stage that comes into play, especially when thinking about what the city is being asked for. I don't know if we already know what the city is going to be asked for. I know that there's been this conversation about the brownfield tiff. But yeah, to understand when that might happen.
Yeah, I believe that would be kickstarted as a part of the brownfield. They, I don't know where they are in terms of their brownfield process, but yeah, once they, you know, once we kickstart that process or move further along within that, we should see the community benefits ordinance be enacted.
And so this could, this can move forward not, you know, contingent on that, right? So that could not happen. And this still could be moving, this still can move forward outside of that.
If they choose to have a brownfield, then, you know, then they probably, they obviously wouldn't really move forward until they have that incentive through the brownfield. However, if they do not want to have a brownfield, then they do not have to go through the brownfield process. And I don't think they would have to go through the community benefits ordinance either because they're not asking for an incentive from the city.
And then there were a couple, I'm gonna try to make my way through. So one, another thing is I just, I wonder, so this is maybe a, a question. So I'm just wondering whether our developer could talk about examples of other projects of this size that, that they have done. I know I've heard about and seen some things too, but I think some of these, some of these questions kind of are related to trying to get a sense of, you know, your experience in, in doing this, this kind of work.
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity to share. So my development experience goes back about twenty years in affordable housing space, going all the way back to two thousand and four, when I was a part of a community development organization that my father chaired and led the largest affordable housing development project in Cook County, Illinois at that time, delivering over a hundred and seventy units of affordable for sale, single family homes. And that moved me forward into my career where I served as the lead for commercial real estate for Ford Motor Company and led over $2 billion worth of transactions for Ford Motor. In my experience, leading the commercial real estate team personally and professionally. I've also, I, I chair an organization based out of Memphis, Tennessee, the Church of God in Crisis Community Economic Development Corp., which is responsible for delivering over twenty-two hundred units of affordable housing in the greater Memphis area. We're one of the largest landholders in the city of Memphis. And over the last, just in the last four years, we've delivered more than two hundred and eighty units of affordable housing there, a twenty-three unit project, recapitalized another hundred and twenty unit development there, saved it from displacing the residents that were there, did a lot of special bond financing with the, the state of Tennessee and lent my name to several other projects because of my experience with HUD and, and, and dealing with these type of projects. I also consult on these type of developments across the country with special financing, including one of the projects recently here that's moved forward. There was a gap on the Catherine Street project in Ann Arbor with Ann Arbor Housing Commission, where we served as the consultant and identified $4 million in gap funding to go into that project to preserve the affordability in those sixty-three units. And we, my firm, we also consult on that level of projects across the country and other markets with a lot of nonprofits and faith-based partners. So I have extensive amount of experience delivering both from, from acquisition through construction and development. Our development team has over five billion in asset delivery experience, delivering assets. The, the big caveat here is that for most of our careers, we've done it on a larger scale for larger developers where we were the leads. We were running large teams and development teams. And over the last few years, we've had an opportunity to do that personally and was challenged to do that here in my own backyard, because I live here. And so that's the reason for Ypsilanti, no other reason other than there was a challenge to say, you've done this all over the country, but you've done nothing in your own backyard. And so I took the challenge to say, can we do some meaningful work here?
Thank you. My other question, so I'm interested, you know, as folks have started reaching out to us about this development, just to respond to some of those things, but also a question, you know, I, I wonder about, you know, the current tenants of one twenty-four Pearl and their level of satisfaction with this transition, how that has gone. I don't know if there's, y'all have done any surveys or anything like that, but that was just a question that came up in terms of thinking about this. As people have reached out, I know we got a lot of folks reaching out about concerns about what the development could do for business for the ale house, which, I mean, I, I mean, my question, I mean, like, I, I'm like, I don't know. I think having an apartment right next door to a restaurant and a bar, you might get a lot of people who just want to go downstairs and then stumble back upstairs. I, I mean, that's, I know that might sound like insensitive, but I don't understand how adding people for that kind of business would actually be a detriment. That doesn't, I mean, it doesn't compute for me. Because to me, more people next to a restaurant usually would be more people going to that restaurant. So that would be, that would be one thing. And then I know the parking has come up. But again, I know we've talked about this, that the parking lot across the street is right across the street and it's not full. It is not full. I, I, I don't know when it has been full, but I have never found it to be full. And I am down there on, on often, often basis, on foot as well. So, so I just want to say that, like, I, I, I don't want to seem insensitive to those concerns. But I actually think that the ale house could use some more people coming into there. So I, I think that that would actually be a positive. And I'm, I'm, I just have questions about where that concern is coming from in that way. So I just want to name that I heard it and I do think it's important. And then I also, I wonder if we have a sense of, in, I mean, I know these things can, you know, maybe it's hard to know, but I don't know, maybe attorney bar, like, if you have a sense of what the timeline for the civil case might be, like, how long can we? maybe it's hard to know, but I don't know, maybe attorney bar, like, um, if you have a sense of what the timeline for the civil case might be, like, how long can we expect that that might be in process?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't give you a definite answer on it. It can very tremendously depending on the facts.
Mm-hmm. So it could go for like another year or so, right?
Yes, certainly.
Mm-hmm. So I think that that, some of the things around like whether we, this, this project waits for that litigation, just kind of uplifts or shows that that might be unreasonable to think that, you know, everything can be held up but based on a lawsuit by one company. Um and then the, a question, just in terms of, this is a little bit more of details. One, I thought, uh, well, a question I have, these are of, of things that were in there. One, the green rooftop, is that for, like, accessible rooftop for people? Or is it more like a garden rooftop?
I believe that it is going to be um a rooftop that is accessible for residents of the building.
Cool. Uh, that sounds fun. And then the other thing I saw um was that it had um that it was going to be providing recycling for the residents of the building. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So I just lift that because a lot of um renters, a lot of have been requesting that. Um, and um, a lot of different landlords don't provide that service, and so I just wanted to lift that up as a um, a possible service. Then the other question I have, so this was under the leasing um section, Article nineteen, I think. Um, and it was talking about the although maybe this is a little different. Let me think about this for a second, because that was, I was looking at this when I thought that the individuals were owning the properties. But I guess the condos are more of that than maybe this, um that concern is not as big of one, because I was just concerned about whether people would be able to purchase the spaces and then use them for Airbnb. But if the condos or the buildings themselves, then I guess that doesn't, that's not as big an issue. Okay. Uh, I think, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment or question?
Yes? Sorry, I turned my page. I had one more, one more. Um and uh, so this is just a question about the, the, the commercial retail space. Do we have any ideas about what that might be? Is it the idea for it to be one commercial space, multiple commercial spaces? Do we have senses of what that, some of those things might be?
Or, I mean, considering it's like fourteen hundred square feet, I imagine it would just be one. Um, it's designed currently to just be one. Um, but you know, I mean, it could be, um, because this building type is classified as a mixed-use building type per the zoning ordinance, you know, the first floor, it could be um retail, it could be a restaurant, it could be uh an o- an office as well. It's just one of the conditions that we're um suggesting is that it's not an accessory use to the um, that it's not an accessory use to the apartment, because if it becomes an accessory use, then you no longer have uh the mixed-use development, which then constitutes a major amendment to the PUD, which would require them to go through the PUD process all over again. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Oh, I just have two questions. One, I just would like to say I'm excited about having more housing downtown, helping to create a more vibrant downtown. One of the questions is, if the lawsuit does not go in your favor, do you have plans where you can alter the current plan? And my other question is, when can we expect the PUD?
The agreement?
Mm-hmm.
So the um, your question about the, the suit, um, I think from a perspective of wanting to move forward, we certainly would love to continue to bring a project forward. Um, what we're willing to do is move forward at our own risk at this point, knowing that um if council makes a decision um to move forward, um, that at that point, it's our risk to take, whether or not, um, if that lawsuit goes in our favor and doesn't go in our favor. Um, at that point, it's, w- we're the ones at risk, our capital is at risk. Um, I'm willing to take that risk because I live here, um, and I've made a commitment to come and invest here. Um, with that said, um, if it shouldn't, there's uh ramifications to our funding sources that could be impacted. Specifically, the little over two million dollars in MEDC support, uh, that's not easy to come by. Um, so that could impact our ability to move forward with the project. So um, our willingness to move forward versus the financial viability of moving forward uh is um something to consider, and the, the time delay right now has severe ramifications to that uh financial feasibility uh in the future. Um, your second question was
When can we expect?
The PUD agreement. So the, with the PUD agreement, um, as was stated earlier at council. Um, um typically, in, in our experience as developers, we, we see the PUD agreement come uh as we know what a lot of those defined items are, that ultimately you all will approve, because that's what goes into the negotiated PUD agreement. Um, it becomes a little premature for us to recommend that, knowing that um you all have to approve um both what the planning commission has uh recommended, but then any departures that you might have from that uh informs that agreement. So we did provide a draft, so I don't want to say that we didn't provide it, we provided a draft master D that's, that um i- is included. Um, that a lot of those elements that then will define that PUD um that will move forward, and so our, our goal is to continue to negotiate that um, uh, with what's required with the, the, the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more, just word, um, Josh, if you could tell us again why it was brought tonight and if you could just tell us that again.
Yeah, so basically, um, when the applicants per um applied to, for the PUD, they had um per the ordinance, we have ninety days for the planning commission to make a decision. Planning commission made a decision within uh just before the ninety-day requirement. The ordinance then requires um city council to make a decision within sixty days of planning commission um approval, and so that's why um we are currently here, because we are at the end of that sixty days.
Thanks again.
Yeah.
So actually, piggybacking on that question about the sixty-day window, so that is by ordinance, is
Correct.
Maybe this is a question for Mr. Bar, but if you can answer it, Josh, that's fine. Um, being that so we set the ordinances and the codes and all those things like that, is there, so we are locked to this sixty days because of the ordinance, and there's no way for us to depart from that?
Correct, yes. And also, um, I believe, and if you don't mind, um, that I, I believe this isn't even um something that we typically see in the, in our ordinances um throughout the state. I think that's something that's not required per the Planning and Abbling Act, and so this is something that's just unique to our city's zoning ordinance. Yes.
This, if we want to talk general zoning, I think sixty days is a quick timeline that is something pretty unique in Ipsy's ordinance. Um, has there been a brownfield um plan already started for this project? I know we've kind of discussed it, but has that already been begun, or is that still just on the list but not been addressed?
So I'll have Joe speak on that, because he's been working with that.
Well, there has been lots of discussions regarding a brownfield plan. A brownfield plan at the county has not been submitted. The application fee for the city for incentive request has not been uh applied for, and so at this point, there's no uh plan whatsoever for anyone to review.
Okay. So that would be something that, should this move forward, would come after the PUD, or we can obviously request after the PUD is submitted?
So because there's nothing submitted
Yeah.
whatsoever, um, we don't know when and if there will be. There has been lots of conversations. I know Katie has been in conversations with the developer since January, maybe before then, December. Um, and so there's been lots of discussions over it, but uh the city has an application fee for any incentive and the Brownfield Development Authority has an, an application for an incentive, and neither have been actually triggered, so.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then at this time, could you, that's it for you, Joe. Thank you, sorry. Um, probably for the developer, um, at this point, could you share with us what your forecasted rents are for these units?
I can speak to that a little bit. So our target, our target AMI levels are between fifty and eighty percent AMI, so I can speak to that. Um, what I can say is that um, along with the brownfield conversation, um, the delays in the project triggered our um, triggered a financial impact to the project that's not making brownfield feasible right now. We're trying to figure that out to preserve affordability. So we have a few applications right now. I mentioned the Federal Home Loan Bank, that's a really tight turnaround. We hit the June seventh deadline. We got a few partners, uh banking partners who never do this, but literally jumped in the fight with us like a week before the deadline to get applications submitted so that we can try to target some deeper affordability on the project. So with that said, we're still trying to move the affordability as deep as possible. We have a two-point-eight million dollar plus gap on the project right now that we're trying to close um to get as much affordability as we can and as deep as we can and still keep a viable project. So um, that's where we are. So what I can say is, our, our commitment is to fifty to eighty percent AMI. Uh, what we're trying to do is figure out how much of that can be at as low as fifty, sixty percent as possible. It's not our goal to deliver a luxury development product here. This is intended to be a workforce and an affordable development project.
Okay, and a follow-up to that, if I may. Um, and the AMI is calculated based on the, on the county, right? It's, or it's not by zip code or by the city's specific, it's county median income? Is that how it's determined?
Yeah, so it's county, uh, it's the county median income. We, we have taken an adjustment, or we're thinking through an adjustment for the local market, and we recently had or not recent, but in March, we, we did a study and a survey of the existing uh inventory that's out there. One thing I want to point out um is that MISTDA um now has a new uh sort of way that they calculate cost um household burdened um households. So if you spend thirty percent or more of your income on housing, you're considered cost burdened. MISTDA also adds transportation to that cost now, to say you're spending more, on average, Michiganders are spending fifty percent of their income on both housing and um transportation costs. So one of the things we're doing in the development is, is not just addressing the rent issue, we're addressing rent, utilities, and transportation. I think that's very important to highlight. We're doing something that hasn't been done um in the county. Uh, one of those is, we're targeting deep levels of um uh sort of transportation cost discount by providing car sharing access, where there will be shared vehicles on-site for, for people to use for like short, short trips to the grocery store, et cetera. Um, and then also, um, we are um providing, in partnership with AATA, bus passes, go, go passes for all the residents as well. The idea is to reduce the amount of transportation burden that are on residents. We've quantified this with MISTDA, and that cost burden goes from twenty percent down to less than five percent now for a household. So that becomes really important. And then we're also doing a lot with environmental sustainability in the development with uh reducing the energy costs. So we have solar, in addition to that green roof, there's solar there. Uh, and then we're also working with DTE on an energy improvement program for affordable housing that um offsets a lot of the costs of um heating and cooling, which most landlords pass on to their tenants. So in our survey of Ips- the city of Ipsilani, even though you may see a eight hundred, nine hundred dollar a month um studio or one-bedroom apartment rent, the utility costs, especially in historic homes, are very expensive here. They're running on the higher end of twenty percent. Um, according to our, the market study that was done, twenty percent of people's um household burden cost. So if you calculate those together, um essentially, we're looking at the average um tenant spending less than thirty percent of their income across all of those, not just um housing alone, but housing, transportation, and utility costs. And so that's an important piece to lift up as a part of affordability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. Um so, thank you, Councilmember See. That was going to be one of my questions, was going to be around um the potential cost for um the spaces, as we've been seeing some different numbers um around. And also for, with thinking about the sizes of the spaces. But one thing I just wanted to bring forward, so this is from, is just um uh the MISTDA from twenty-twenty-three, their income and rent limit. So I just wanted to share a couple of this with us, just to give us some numbers to think about. Um, and so, um, so at the bottom of it, so at fifty percent, um the, that's looking at, um so for one person, that was at uh forty-three thousand four hundred. Um, two people, forty-nine thousand six hundred. Um, seems like most of these are one-bedroom or studios, so I don't know if you would get up to three-person, but that's um fifty-five thousand eight hundred. And then when looking at the, um, the, then um what it would look like in terms of rent for those units. So at efficiency, which I think is like a studio, um, that's one thousand eighty-five at fifty percent. Um, a one-bedroom is one thousand one hundred sixty-two. Um, in terms of those amounts for at that fifty percent, so obviously it would go up or moving up toward eighty percent. Um but just to kind of give us some of that to keep in mind for that.
Thank you. Are there further questions or comments from council?
There's some in the engineering report for the um soil cores. Um, there's a statement, if there's uh any underground tanks, do we know that there is an underground tank at the site?
Yeah, there is. Um, the site used to be a former gas station, so those tanks are still underneath the site.
And how deep are those?
That I do not know.
And so, what's that?
You?
I didn't see that.
Yeah, where, where would that be in the
The brownfield isn't related to the zoning process.
Okay. Oh.
No, but I'm looking at the, the, the engineering study for the, the uh, for the soils in terms of what, and this is why I asked the question about five feet, or five stories versus six stories, because the engineer who's looking at the soils is saying it's a five-story building. Well, if there's a six-story building, then there's an added weight, and is that accounted for in all the determinations that they've made? Um, for going down twelve feet for the, for the parking structure and the load bearing of the, of the substrates. So it's just like I'm not an engineer, I'm just asking, because there's an inconsistency in these documents. So it's like, if it's going down twelve feet, how far down is the is the tank? And I, I didn't see anything about where the cores were that, that indicated where that tank but that presumably is why the brownfield would be considered, right? Or are there other reasons for considering a brownfield?
Well, the brownfield would offer the developer um the possibility to have some tax incentives.
Eric, you have something you want to add?
I, I can speak to it. Um, so there are underground, there is an underground storage tank. So the, the port, report you see from TEC in there is dated in January, and that was prior to going to the Historic District Commission. So we, we did contemplate a five-story building that, that report predates
Got it.
then going back and forth with the Historic Commission, who wanted to see the height of the building match the height of Centennial. So that's how we got to six stories. With that said, we did go back and do another geotechnical report. It's not, it doesn't show here, as, as mentioned, it's not a part of the um, the, the site plan approval process, uh, but it's, it's a part of our um constructability uh and determining uh that we're going to remove the underground storage tanks. Um, I've done uh probably a, a couple of dozen of these projects with removing stor- underground storage tanks. Um, if you, you, you plan to, to do the most, um, and hope to do less. Um, and so our, our plans calculate for that. Um, with that said, um, the brownfield, um, the brownfield TIF, if we did go that route, would not be for the environmental remediation. It's, it's
Okay.
it's not substantial, it's, there, there's, there's enough of it, but it's not um enough to justify or warrant it. The reason we would go for it is for the MISTDA brownfield TIF, which is um related to housing specifically and not necessarily environmental conditions.
It's much broader.
Right. Right.
That's it.
All right, further discussion?
Um, no, I do have a question for, for our staff in terms of this gets approved, this gets denied, what are the next steps in terms things that would come before us and things that need to be resolved outside of here?
Yeah, so in terms of if this gets approved, we highly recommend that all of the conditions that we listed be included as conditions for approval. That way we are ensuring that, you know, we're covering all of our bases. You know, we also do believe that there, that the PUD agreement is essential as part of one of the conditions of approval because I get to again, make sure that the PUD is actually providing a higher quality development, hence why they are getting these departure from the zoning ordinance.
And I just want to add too, because part of the language of the PUD does say that the developer shall ensure that the, the public utilities and other, and all portions of the development are not maintained or are not to be maintained or operated at the public's expense. I think that's, that's a big reason why the PUD agreement is something this city has utilized in the past. And that was included in that RFL memo.
And so the, the, how often is the PUD agreement not not attached to the PUD?
I think just from my memory, going back to ozone house, which I believe was actually before me, but it was probably around two thousand seventeen or eighteen. Every PUD sense has had a PUD agreement attached to it.
Thank you.
Councilmember McLean?
Sorry, Mayor. If I understand correctly, one of those conditions, one of the main conditions is related to the lawsuit. Can you speak to the nature of that particular condition?
Yeah, so one of the things that we wanted to ensure is that the lawsuit, the lawsuit obviously has to be resolved before we even issue any building permits. Because let's say the court does actually end up ruling in favor of the Mowers. Well, if we already issued building permits, we issued the developer permits to build on someone else's land. And so we want to make sure that this is dealt with before we even consider issuing any types of building, any types of building permits, because we don't want to have the city held liable for this.
So a resolution of this between the parties would suffice to meet this condition, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Madam Chair, just, I'll try to be brief. I just want to be transparent about where I, where I stand on this. I think there's much to like about this proposal, even to be excited about. But when we think about new projects coming into the community, which we certainly want to promote, I don't ever want us to lose sight of the fact that we've got existing businesses here and that we need to take care of them as well. We all know about businesses have gone out of business in the last year. And businesses, whether they do it consciously or not, every, every day, every week, every month, make a calculation. Is it still worth doing business here in this city? And if we tolerate conditions where they make that calculation, say, I can't, I can't stay here anymore or I can't keep doing business or I'm not going to buy more properties or I'm not going to invest in this community. When we do that, we dug an even deeper hole for ourselves than, than what we might argue we have right now. And so I'm, I'm troubled by the fact that we have this, this issue of the easement hanging over us for now five months or seven months, a good long time that has not only gotten not resolved, but has gotten deeper with a counter suit. And to make matters worse in my mind, in that condition, we have the developer coming onto the property and saying, well, we don't believe it's an easement anyway, so we're going to stick these barricades up so you can't empty your trash. And your people who have written to me can't park their cars anymore. I mean, it's, it strikes me that that is a strategy, like just coming over and poking a stick in the city and the city's residents. And I don't like that. And it, it concerns me that that's the, the approach that this developer is taking. I don't want to have to believe that, but I'm having a hard time not believing it. So Josh, I'm looking at you, I'm not directing these comments at you, you're just happening to be at the podium. But I'm not going to support this tonight. I'd love to think that it can be resolved and we can, by the time we see this again, if we see this again, that we can come together on it. But in my mind, we're not there yet.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. I just wanted to offer a couple of quick responses while, I mean, I didn't know about the barricade. I do want to just say that part of this big issue is because the Mowers are claiming that due to use of that space, it makes that space theirs. And so I think, I think it's, I just want to say that to say that them saying, no, this space is ours based on what is actually in the legal documents should not be used against them in that way, because they're saying that this space is, the Mowers are saying the space is theirs because they have been using it. And they have been using it and receiving income from it, even though that space has not been deeded to them. And so really, they've been overusing that space if these things continue to be upheld. So I just want to say that. I also just want to say too, in terms of thinking about businesses, and this is not, this is not a direct thing. This is just because I like the public to always know where I sit. But please, if there's ever something that tells people to not purchase more properties, to make more rental properties, that is not a bad time to me, because I think we need less landlords buying more houses and more people being able to do that for themselves. So if that's the only kind of business that we allow to run rampant here, then that is not a very good model of businesses that I think we need to always be inviting in.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Mayor Proton?
To, to your one point, the, the Mowers came in and they did state that that was their property, but I would like Mr. Barr to describe the easement and what that entails. In general sense, not specifically that, that this is an easement, but in generally what an easement means.
Well, when you buy a piece of property, a good practice would be to find out that you have, you're getting good title to the property. And the way you do that is do it by a record check at the registrar de's office to find out what documents are of record. And then the second thing you have to do is you have to look at the property, you have to investigate the property to find out if there's some use on the property that should give you notice or something. And the reason you do that is because there is a law, there's a common law, it has been in some states statutory enacted called a prescriptive easement. And the prescriptive easement is something like adverse possession. And the idea is that if you invest property adversely for a certain period of time, then you do get titled, you get a form of title to that property to continue the use that you've used for a number of years. I haven't done an examination of the lawsuit in this case. From what I understand is the Mowers are claiming that they have a prescriptive easement because they have used this property for a driveway for over many years. And that is, that is the question, and I believe that the court will determine. If the court determines that the Mowers do have a prescriptive easement in the property, that would be on part of the property that the building is proposed to be built on. So that's a conundrum, does council agree to give permission to build on someone else's property? Now, it may turn out that it is, may turn out that it isn't.
In terms of the adverse possession, if there can't be any, if they don't have control of the property, and I know that's, that's questionable definition, but if there's a, determined to be an easement and, and they wouldn't have control of the property to that law.
Well, they would have control of it except for that easement, right?
Steve, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember Simmons?
This is just a clear, I just want, what you just said, Mr. Barr just like made another question. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing right. So you were saying that if when you were talking about the, the easement and then council needing to decide, I'm just trying to figure out what that, what that would look like. So if the easement is determined to belong to the Mowers, that council would then have to decide if a building can be built on that or not?
So we're making a decision right now or today to give the PUD. And what we're saying is that all these, you know, actions can be, can move forward. But if we find out that there is a prescriptive easement, then we have just given permission to build on property that doesn't belong to the developer potentially. Is that what Mr. Barr is saying?
As I understand the planning commission, their recommendation was approval subject to conditions. And one of the conditions is settlement or the solving of this lawsuit problem.
And so then that gets back to the question which I asked you earlier, which is how long this could possibly take, right? Because it's, so yeah, so then that brings that question right back to the forefront, because there are ways that people can slow things down, you know, like just decide, you know, like, oh, I'm just not going to show up on this whatever. That can also push a timeline, you know, and even if they think that they might be, what's that word? You know, adjudicated against. So anyhow, so that, I mean, and I'm wondering like how much, so while that's in waiting, how much can be happening to help the process, for the process to move forward at all? Like how much, you know, before, before they put shovel into concrete, which I guess isn't probably what they would do. You know, before that, you know, there's a lot of things that obviously have to happen. But what, how much time between if we approve this to when that could reasonably happen? To understand what the range of possibility is?
So per our zoning ordinance, the, basically the expiration of a site plan starts once you have your final approval. And so if you have this condition that the lawsuit has to be resolved or settled, the approval would not, the timeline would not start ticking until that is all the conditions are met. And once all the conditions are met, you have essentially started your timeline down. The one year, if you don't pull, if you don't pull building permits in two years, if you do pull, if you do pull building permits.
From what, so from the city's perspective, and then I guess that then the developers will have their own timeline for once they decide that this kind of passes their timeline?
I mean, yes and no, like it really depends on, again, we, we have this timeline established in our zoning ordinance. And so if it's, once it's resolved, you know, once it's resolved based on the findings, the developer would have basically a year to pull, to pull building permits. And if they don't, the site plan expires, they have to go through the whole process again. If they pull building permits but don't diligently pursue construction for two years, then the site plan expires and they would have to go through the PUD process again. One of the other things I did want to bring up is that section one twenty-two dash seven oh two A does also state the, that all planning developments must have unified control. And so this lawsuit is challenging the idea of unified control. We cannot, per the zoning ordinance, approve, not, not approve. We cannot, per the zoning ordinance, basically give the final, all like approval, you can apply for building permits until unified control is addressed.
Thank you.
All right, so, so Josh, we've had a lot of conversation. I want to pass back to some, the part of this initial process when you were talking about the steps. Tonight, what we're doing tonight, where does that leave us in terms of between now and getting to final approval, including all of the conditions?
So tonight, council has the option to either approve with conditions or deny. It was brought to my attention that if council decides to deny, they should go through a second reading and deny again, because ultimately we can postpone, but there is no more time per the zoning ordinance to really postpone per this date. So I mean, I guess the, I mean, you could use, I, it'd be, if Mr. Barr could comment, I assume you could use the language of postpone, but some type of decision has to be made tonight, and then the next meeting, it would basically be like either approve with conditions or deny.
You have something to say to us? Yes, please.
Elizabeth Rogers again, for the record. I just wanted to mention that I have spoken with my client and to our point about the PUD, still the agreement itself being in the Elizabeth Rogers again, for the record. I just wanted to mention that to the earlier point about the PUD agreement still being in negotiation. I've conferred with my client and to the extent the city is concerned that if it moves forward with this reading for the second time, if it pushes it forward, to the extent that the city is concerned about approving it and there being some sort of negative ramification, the developer has indicated that he's willing to indemnify the city and certainly Mr. Barkin talked to you about governmental immunity. And Mr. Scott, the developer, also mentioned earlier that he was willing to move forward at his own risk. So if I were a plaintiff's counsel in a similar matter, if a judge ruled in my client's favor and said that there was a prescriptive easement, then part of what our request in the order is to have any building that is built within that easement torn down. And so when Mr. Scott says he's willing to move forward at his own risk, the court would order the demolition of any building that has been built within the easement at the developer's cost, not the city, and that is a legal matter, is our position. But to the extent there's some blowback on the city for that, if you incur some harm, the developer has indicated that he's willing to put in the PUD agreement that he'll indemnify the city.
Thank you. I mean, I appreciate that. I don't know if that makes me feel better, but I appreciate what you've shared. Thank you. Oh, Mayor Proton?
So I don't really understand how that fits in, because if we can't issue building permits, you can't start the building without the easement. So if it's ruled against the developer in the lawsuit, then there's no control of the property, there are no, no permits would be issued and you couldn't go forward. It's a moot point.
Based on the, yeah.
Yeah, that would, yeah, that would be correct.
Thanks.
I didn't really know what else.
Yeah, okay, all right. Sure, why not?
Adam Bro, my SKR, okay, thanks again. I just wanted to, I just, just kind of jump in really briefly. You know, there's different types of risks that the client assumes and the, the building moving forward at, at this stage is, it would represent a significant expansion of costs incurred by the client. And we're talking about multiple teams of engineers, you know, another, you know, months plus design fees, et cetera. So it's not just the risk of actually putting shovels into the ground, but also moving the process forward, permitting fees, design fees, et cetera. So that's part of the risk as well. I just wanted to clarify.
All right, Josh or Andy, someone? I know, I'm, I'm going back to this sixty day thing, because it's, I'm a little confused by it being that, you know, we set policy. So because of the sixty day window, we have to make a decision first reading tonight. It would come back if it passes for second reading at our next council meeting. if it passes for second reading, eh, at our next council meeting. Correct.
I would defer to Mr. Barr or, or City Manager Hellenga on, on what the readings, you know, sequence goes, um.
Well, more, I'm going beyond that. So is there no, is the timeframe for meeting these additional, um, exceptions or, you know, requirements that we have? And the connection to first and second reading, how do they, how do they work together? Because if we pass this on set first and second reading, they would, and what point in time is there required for these PUD requirements, conditions to be met, I guess is my question. Is there a timeframe that we give that says in 30 days, in 60 days, in 90 days, these things have to be met? Or is that separate from this process that we're doing right?
It would be separate.
Is there a timeframe that is expected for these things to be met?
Far on that one.
Well, the law generally requires a reasonable time, but if you want a timeframe, then I would suggest that you include that in whatever action you take.
And I understand that like number 14, because it's in litigation, there's no way for us to give. I wouldn't know a timeframe to give for that to be complete, but I do, I just have questions about there being so many conditions. I think that is the thing that brings me the most pause. Um, and in particular, the, the cross litigation, right? Because kind of like Councilmember Simmons originally said, this could go on for a very long time. And I got, well, I, I don't know. I feel indifferent. Yeah.
If I may, and ultimately I'll defer to Mr. Barr, but I believe that city council could compel certain timeframes and conditions. I, I mean, I would definitely defer to Mr. Barr in the end, but if you want to see something before second reading, you know, those are conditions that planning commission suggested and cared about. And I think if you want to fast track a timeframe for them, I think that that's your own, your own choice, uh, with deference to Mr. Barr, of course.
I would agree with him.
Further discussion or questions from council?
Trying to get back to the actual resolutions.
Right, I know, there's so many. Councilmember Sweet.
Uh, Mayor Protem brought it up earlier, but in item number 15, item number 15, um, where it indicates the PUD may also, can we alter that to say must or shall specify and then the items that come after it?
Do you want to make a? I don't see that. Oh, here, okay.
See what I'm talking about? That, that second sentence.
Yep, I see it. Yeah. Yeah, that can be done.
We make a, make it a friendly amendment, so that'd be who, who's probably. Mayor Protem moved it, but who supported this originally?
I'd support it.
No, no, who, when you read it, who supported you when you first read this into the record? Oh, Councilmember King. Do you, are you okay with that as a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments, discussion from council? Councilmember King.
Again, I just want to say I am truly excited to see this move forward and I am excited about this developer bringing this to the city of Ypsilanti.
Thank you. All right, if there are no further questions or comments, acting clerk, you can call the roll.
We, we state the,
We state the moat?
Yeah, the, the resolution.
You, you.
No, I don't.
You had it.
It's gone.
Oh, all right.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city has an interest in protecting the health, safety and welfare of the community. And whereas the city has a master plan that reflects the policy goals of the city, including the guiding value that anyone, no matter what age or income, can find a place and to call home in Ypsilanti. And whereas the applicant 124 Peace Plaza LLC intends to provide public benefit in this, this development. Whereas the planning commission recommends the city council approve the site condominium plan unit development for the site known as 124 and 120 Pearl. With the property's legal description in the attached ordinance and now therefore be resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council adopt the ordinance entitled Plan Unit Development and Site Condominium Mixed Use and Multi-Family Development at 124 Pearl Street and 12 Pearl, 120 Pearl. With conditions as recommended in the request for legislation memo on first reading.
All right, that is what is on the table. Acting Clerk John, you may call the roll.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
No.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
No.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
No.
Uh, Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, I, I just, I just want to say, I expect to see so much more, um, from this, uh, and hopefully some things before a second reading. That's just my comment that I will make, um, because that was a very difficult decision to make with all of these outstanding things.
All right.
Or moving on, council, you'll want to do a motion to extend. I suggest midnight.
Just about to do that. So can we get a motion to extend?
Yeah, I moved to extend till 11 o'clock.
Midnight.
Oh, midnight, I'm sorry. Uh, I moved to extend the meeting till midnight.
Your support?
Support.
On favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, um, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Um, and there were, uh, some changes, so Councilwoman McLean, you have that. Do you need me to restate what those things are? Are you ready? So it'll be these two, the, the minutes and D E F and G and the dispatch. Just read it from here.
The agenda includes the following. Resolution number 2024 dash 138, approving minutes of the May 28th, 2024 regular council meeting. Resolution number 2024 dash 137, approving the minutes of the June 4th, 2024 regular council meeting. Resolution number 2024 dash 143, authorizing the application for an annual permit that will allow the city of Ypsilanti to work with the Michigan Department of Transportation's right of way to complete work under the conditions of the permit. Resolution number 2024 dash 144, reappointing Brian Jones Chance to the Planning Commission with the term ending May 1st, 2027. Resolution number 2024 dash 145, appointing Tom Roach to the Zoning Board of Appeals with the term ending May 1st, 2027. Resolution number 2024 dash 143, appointing Emmanuel V. Mauer to the Downtown Development Authority with a term ending July 1st, 2028. And resolution, without a number yet, uh, to extend the Washtenaw County Dispatch contract to June 30th, 2025. So move.
Support.
All right, uh, acting clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, Councilmember Sweet, you have our next resolution.
Resolution number 2024 dash 141. Resolution to approve a two-year extension of the city's towing services contract with Wall Street Towing. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti contracted with Wall Street Towing, doing business as Budget Stadium Towing for towing services. And whereas the contract will expire July 30th, 2024, the city manager is requesting a two-year extension, including all terms and fees the same, same, except for storage costs increased to $40 per day. And whereas city council finds that the contractor has provided satisfactory services and has a towing storage yard in the city limits and it is in the best interest of the city to extend the contract without competitive bids. Now therefore, it is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the extension of the towing contract is approved for an additional two years with only one exemption, that storage fees are increased to $40 per day. And the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the extension agreement for and on behalf of the city, subject to approval by the city attorney. And I so move.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Tucson. Do we have?
Council, um, as it, uh, stated in the resolution, RFL, this is just a essentially a, a continuation of our current contract, uh, with budget towing or Wall Street Towing, rather. And, uh, the only, uh, change would be an increase, uh, from $34 to $40 to offset costs, um, from increase in gas prices and cost of living adjustments. And as previously stated, would be no additional cost to the city.
Thank you. Discussions from council. Councilmember McLean.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, when was this last bid? Do we know?
I believe 2016.
Do we know if we have other potential bidders that are located here in the city?
The last time this bid out, I believe that they were the only qualified bidder. I'd have to look into that, but, um, this, this, we've been doing, uh, business with, uh, this company for some time. Um, I, I do know that, um, you know, they, they have the equipment necessary to provide exactly what we need. They've been doing business with us for some time. Um, I know the, the operator and owner are here. They could probably talk a little bit more towards that of what their company can provide that no local company is, 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 uh, able to provide. So if, if they would like to, they could come up and, uh, address council.
Mr. Barr, while they're coming up.
I have had contact with one other proposed bidder. Whether or not they qualify, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
It depends what you want, Madam Mayor and Council. My client's company has a range of equipment from the, you know, from the, the smallest, uh, you know, wrecker, smallest tow truck on up to the largest ones that, that cost in excess of, of, you know, of a million dollars. There's nobody similarly situated in the city. And one thing I forgot to mention to you during the three-minute comment is, um, one of the things we provide under the contract and have provided historically is free towing for all but the largest vehicles, uh, for the city. When city vehicles are need, need towing, uh, we do it, uh, gratis. We also clean up, uh, the public, uh, toes, the accident sites like oil and so forth, also gratis to the city. So again, if, if you want to bid it out, that's fine. But if you put an RFP together that you could use other examples like the sheriff's RFP, you're going to see that, that the things that you would want in, in such a contract, there's no one else that's local in the city that has the ability to do what my client does. And, you know, I say this, I'm not just, you know, a lawyer that's been around, you know, a couple of weeks with them. I mean, I, I have been Mr. Salome's friend for, you know, uh, 15 years and, and their attorney for quite a long time as well. So yeah, I mean, what I say is self-serving in terms of my client, but I'm telling you the truth. So, uh, ordinarily, I, I, I'm a township attorney myself. And I would tell my township board, go ahead and bid it out, right? Because it's the best thing to do for the township. But if, if you want a place where people can come and get their cars here in Ypsilanti, if you want a company that's going to respond to municipal calls and assist the fire department or assist the police department who has the wide range of equipment, including the big and heavy equipment that, that nobody else locally has, that has the staff to effectively take care of, of the needs of the city. Honestly, I don't think there's anyone else but Wall Street Towing. Does that mean that no one else toes within the city boundaries? No, no, of course, there, there are other companies that do. But so again, if you did want to bid it, I think what your manager would find out is that when he put the bid specs together, there'd only be one bidder anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'll stand here in case you have other questions. If not, I'll, you know, then I'll sit down.
Other questions? Councilmember King?
I have a question. Um, I think you stated it was originally 36. City Manager Hellenga, I think you said 34. I just want to know what the current cost is. And I also want to know what is the full cost if someone's car was towed, just so I can determine like.
It was 36, it would be up to 40. And the hookup would be $180 for the hookup. There would be a Secretary of State fee of $40 and depending on whether it was a private property or a police initiated call, it could be $30 or $40 additional. And something my, uh, attorney forgot to mention is we do a lot of cross-training with, uh, the fire departments. And we donate the cars and let them cut them up. And then after the cars are cut up, sometimes they do it at our yard here, or sometimes they do it at the yard on Michigan Avenue. But basically, we, we donate the cars and the time and the cleanup for their training when they hire, uh, new firefighters. So we cross-train and we actually do it with Ypsie City, Ypsie Township, Superior. And, uh, sometimes Pittsfield and sometimes Van Buren.
Further answer to, uh, Councilmember King's question. One thing you ought to know is that which towing company handles, uh, city public toes that the state statute sets, uh, uh, a maximum of $1,000 in storage, meaning this. So even if some, it, it's not uncommon in this city, to be honest with you, or in the township, for someone to have their car towed and then they don't come and take it back. Um, and when that happens, the tow cost is normally the smallest part of the cost. It's the storage cost. Because it takes time to go through the process of official abandonment with the Secretary of State, so forth, and then auction or scrapping and so forth. But you should know that no matter who does your towing, the max storage is $1,000. Can't go over that for individuals. Businesses are different, have different rules.
So if my car was towed today, again, I just want to be clear on the price. If my car was towed today and I picked it up the same day, what is the potential amount that I would be out?
Depending on whether, what, what's the reason for the toll? Let me ask you that. Because if the car is undrivable or doesn't, uh, have proper insurance or plates or invalid driver's license, there would be an additional $100 tow out for that.
Let's, let's say, you said, um, a reason. So let's say I was parked in a, a zone that wasn't, in my opinion, clearly marked as.
Permission is to pure private property.
Okay. So we're, I'm not good. I definitely want to, I want to know.
It's a few hundred. I've seen.
Oh, 200? I mean, I want to know.
Three to four, right?
Probably 386.
Yeah, three to four, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And by the way, for the record, because he didn't say his name, this is Billy Salome, who is the owner of Wall Street.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, this was, um, getting into, so are there different costs? I was going to ask about like purpose for towing. I'm just trying, um, like, are there different costs depending on what, what that purpose is?
Like if it's a police-initiated tow for an impound, we have keys, it's a basic 180 hookup and then back to the yard for 40 bucks. Then the release fee for the city, which we collect and turn in every month. And then if.
To the city.
And if it's there over 72 hours, there's a Secretary of State fee.
But you also might see, Councilmember Simmons, you might see things like if a car is down an embankment, you might have a winch charge. You know, there, there can be some, some unusual situations, but by and large, you know, an overwhelming majority of the toes are pretty standard.
I might add to it, we release 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We never deny anybody the ability to redeem their vehicle, as long as they have the capacity to redeem the vehicle. So most places, especially on the weekends, they don't want to release. After five, they don't want to release. As long as you got the money to redeem the vehicle, proof of ownership and insurance and a proper registration, we'll release the car to you.
And are you, then are you towing due to lack of insurance?
Well, I, I, it's not, no, no, that's not my call. That's, that would be the police. No, I'm just here to clean up a mess.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments from Councilmember McLean?
Just one final comment. I just want to clarify the, the reason for my question, uh, earlier. All else being equal, I think there's a lot of people in this room understand probably you as well, that all. Understand probably you as well, that all is being equal, it makes sense every now and then to bid out a contract, especially if it's a long-term contract. I also would say that I put a premium on local ownership. And from what I've heard, we've, we've gotten good service from a good local business. So. I appreciate that. I'm going to certainly support this. But I think it's, it's incumbent upon me to, to ask questions about when we bid.
Be mirror. Ypsilanti, Washington County, MSP. The only one that gets a little bit of a discount is EMU because I push the cars.
Oh, but also one thing I mentioned earlier, I want to reiterate is that we don't get any money from the city. The, the consideration we get from the city is we get to do the police toes. And typically the payment comes from, from the owner of the vehicle, right? So, so you're not paying us anything. And we are collecting your fee and.
Further comments or questions from council?
Thanks for your consideration.
Acting clerk John, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Now.
Mayor Pro Tem Will Coxon?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Councilmember Tucson, you have our next resolution.
I indeed do. Give me a second. Alright, so resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one four two resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the Ypsilanti Police Department desires to replace thirty-five. X-two tasers with thirty-one Axon seven tasers. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti Police Department has been allocated funds in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five budget for the purchase of the tasers. And whereas Axon Enterprise Incorporated out of Scottsdale, Arizona, has provided a total price of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight, sixty-eight dollars to be expended over the next five fiscal years. Therefore, be it resolved that the chief of police be authorized to sign all necessary documents needed to execute the taser purchase and I so move. For.
Move by councilman Tucson, supported by councilman Sweet. More, do you have anything for us?
Well, while he's coming up here, this is, this was something that council budgeted. This would just allow the police department to enter into the agreement to purchase the.
Thank you.
City manager covered it well. I was just simply going to say this just allows us. The opportunity to, to affect the, the contract so that they can prepare delivery by.
Questions are up, councilmember Sweet.
Does this purchase, does this purchase encompass all of the necessary needed tasers for the department? Or do we have additional ones that would need to be purchased?
This is.
So this would cover, okay.
Yep, it's covered everybody.
Replacement.
So with these replacing the old, what then happens with the old? Is there like a recycling process that we can get?
Because of the nature of what they are, we, they go back, you know, to Axon to be destroyed.
Right, yeah, handle that. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. So just a couple of things I was, as I was looking through the information. So is, so each taser is about five thousand dollars each when I was?
Your uptake.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure like how that stacks up with kind of other teaser costs. It looked like when it was looking at, when I was looking at the breakdown, it looked like a lot of that was within the training or certification for use of the tasers.
So there's mandatory requirements, of course, in the training, but also in the maintenance, the continual updates and then the providing. Of the cartridges. You have to certify on tasers every year. And so we expend those cartridges. So all of those is built into the cost. So we don't have to. Quote unquote nickel and dime, you know, every year trying to scrap to get what we need to be certified.
Okay, so yeah, so that's for uses for training purposes, not necessarily uses in general for cartridges that rolled into the overall cost. So. Yeah, so it's like mandated to do such and such training, which then mandated certain uses that then is rolled into the overall cost. Okay. And then, and then as it was going through over the years, it kind of is going up. Is that due to interest or?
I'd have to go back and look at the piece. I don't think it's interest. It's the way we spaced out the, the payments so that we can afford it. So we go in and, you know, low and then it the gradual increase.
And then it also named that there was some savings for something. I was wondering what that was for, if it's like for getting a certain amount or?
Just the size of, you know, our agency. We are a small agency, but once you hit a certain threshold and then we are a repeat customer. And through the negotiation process, of course, we're trying to get the best price.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional, Mayor Pro Tem?
How many times in the last year has it, has a taser been discharged in, on a call?
I don't have those numbers, but we have utilized, we've had deployments that I'm certain of. I don't, I can get you. And follow up and give you an exact number. But we, you know, it's a, it's a viable tool and we're working on additional less than lethal options for the police department.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, without, without the, the taser. And pepper spray, then the only thing you have is, you know, a firearm. And so, you know, we want to make sure we have tools available to us for different occasions.
Councilmember King, I think I saw your hand.
You know what? That was part of my question, but my other question is not really regarding the price. It's just, are the tasers, do they have the yellow on them? Because I don't know.
So the tasers that we are getting, we will be getting yellow tasers. I don't want black tasers. I don't. I think that is a bad methodology and approach. I'm making different requirements to carry. I want everybody to use offhand. I don't ever want there to be a confusion as to the weapon system you have in your hand. So. I've, you know, in the purchase and looking at all of the options. The yellow was mandatory because I don't want there to, what we currently have is black and I don't like it.
Ooh, thank you for that.
Alright, any further comments or questions before we vote? Thank you, Chief. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
We'll pass.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Will Coxon?
Yeah.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, let me see here. Scoot, doop, 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 letter H. Wait, no, McLean is that. Yeah, it's right here, isn't it? Yes, you do. Okay.
Waiting for the mayor pro tem to concede.
No.
Hours late. Resolution number two oh two four dash one four seven, whereas the city of Ypsilanti has received a request from Ace Pyro LLC. For a pyrotechnics permit for a fireworks display on June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. At Rennerston Stadium, seven ninety-nine North Hewitt Road, Eastern Michigan University, and whereas the fire department. Will require certain inspections now therefore it is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. That the pyrotechnics permit is approved for Ace Pyro LLC, subject to approval by the fire department. I so move.
And supported by councilmember Tucson. City manager?
Just real quick, council, this will be for an event held at Reiner Stadium as the resolution stated. It is a relatively short event. This will only occur between five and seven PM as it's said in the. The, the documentation provided. So it is, it should be a minor impact to the surrounding neighborhoods.
Yeah, Steve's neighborhood. So I just, I want to name that there's been a lot of communication to us around the fireworks in general. And so we're going to be discussing the ordinance overall later on in the meeting. And so this resolution is specific to the requests from EMU and Rennerston Stadium. Also, questions or comments from council?
Mayor Pro Tem, yeah, I should have.
Where should I put my hands?
It's, it's.
No, I just want to voice that there's lots of complaints in College Heights about, you know, the fireworks in the past we have. I have not voted for events that were during the middle of the week. And beyond certain time points, and this doesn't fit either one of those things. So it's a weekend and it's a early event. So good.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion, questions? Councilmember Sweet?
There, from, from what's presented, it seems very vague. So it indicates right the timeframe, so five to seven, and then the situation will be thirty seconds. So is that one thirty-second interval? Is it multiple thirty-second intervals? I'm assuming. That, that's the whole thing, the whole show, thirty seconds?
That's the time.
I'm like, I just.
Duration. Right? It says less than.
It, it could be a duration of sound, but I, I, I would imagine thirty seconds would be. A longer sound. So I'm, I'm making an assumption, but I, I believe it would just be.
One time? Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Alright, seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
carries.
Thank you so much. Mayor Pro Tem, now it's your turn.
And I don't have cooking. I'm good. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one four eight. Whereas an effort known as Axe My Tax. Catalo it. Aims to eliminate all real and personal property taxes in Michigan. This ballot initiative is being pursued by individuals who say they don't care about what is lost. This don't care approach. To the impact of this proposal to values, the importance of having shared interest and connections between community members and. Whereas this proposal will cut over seventeen billion dollars in funding for schools, roads, recreation and public safety. At the same time, it provides fractional and restricted placement funding to cities, villages, townships and counties with no replacement revenue to schools. Or other authorities and whereas communities are filled with spaces, activities and core services we need and utilize daily such as public safety. Senior services, roads and water infrastructure, trash collection, education opportunities, libraries and more. To fund these services, our communities rely on property taxes. These property taxes are vital to the providing real human and economic benefits. And now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that while reducing taxes may seem appealing. This proposal will negatively impact in a profound way, the very people and services it claims to protect. Elimination of these resources will make it impossible for state and local governments to deliver core services. Invest in our infrastructure and inspire economic growth. Be it further resolved. That this ballot initiative would have a catastrophic economic and social impact on every community that services. Whose services provide value to residents and businesses. Property taxes serve a clear purpose. In their absence, we lose far more than the ability to provide services. We lose the ability for people to choose and contribute to the community where they live. Be it further resolved that the council of the city of Ypsilanti opposes this ballot initiative and I so move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. By Mayor Pro Tem and supported by, I think, councilmember Sweet and Simmons. I know this was added to the agenda by councilwoman McLean, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I think the, the whereas clauses covered it fairly well, but. This is something that I think was brought to our attention perhaps by the city manager, but also. The Michigan Municipal League has, has weighed in strongly in opposition to this as well. You know, this is, we have a history. Other times in our, our history of the country. We had reference to the, sort of the know-nothings. Back in the eighteen forties, eighteen fifties. And this I would argue is a sort of the know-nothing approach to, to fiscal responsibility. It is the opposite of fiscal responsibility. It would. Not just harm city governments, but gut city governments, along with every other municipal subdivision. And other political subdivisions, schools, libraries, et cetera. And. So I think it's just important that we weigh in here and get the word out to our constituents as folks are trying to. You know, to pass this off as some sort of anti-tax responsible measure. It is highly irresponsible. I would, I would. Branded as brain dead frankly, to gut cities, gut libraries. And it's, I try not to, to use. Exaggerations, but that's, that's not exaggeration. It is, it is just. You know, taking a meat axe to the, to, to budgets around the city so that governments can't function. And that's the goal. There should be no, there should be no mistaking that. So. Appreciate. Other support for it and we'll move it forward.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Councilmember Simmons?
One thing I was just thinking about when looking at this is just like. Naming who it's going to and also. If part of this is for us to push something into, to our constituents. Like if there's, if we want to make sure that it's included in communications, going out. For folks so that they know about this. So when they see it on the ballot. That they're, they know kind of our stance on it. So that would be things that I think would be good to. Add, but also just to see like who we would want to make sure that this goes to.
Yep, appreciate councilmember Simmons' comments. Agreed completely. The question, if, if city manager knows the status of this initiative, I believe they still are going to need to gather signatures. For it. So I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that it gets to the ballot. My hope would be that it never makes it there.
So then we would want people to know that they might be asked to sign a petition for this and to have information about it so that they know ahead of time.
So if council would like. We can include this resolution in the next newsletter, perhaps do a news flash, then also include a link in that. Communication to the MML information sheet, just so it can get the word out to, to the residents and constituents of the city. It's no easy feat to collect enough signatures to get a ballot initiative at the state level. It's a, I don't know the exact percentage, but it's for all votes cast in the last, for the governor in the last gubernatorial election. I think it's either fifteen or twenty percent. So it's, it's, it's a difficult. It's a difficult thing to do, but I think getting information out to, to our residents, it would be a good start.
Further comments or questions from council on this? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson? Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Simmons, you have our next resolution.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the community, including residents, business owners and visitors. Have experienced an increase of the needs of our unhoused and housing and stable community members and have asked city council to support solutions that center care. And whereas we budgeted fifty thousand dollars in the housing trust fund, which can be used to support efforts to create more housing stability and associated services. And whereas Fed Up Ministries has provided a proposal to increase their presence in, in services in the heart of downtown Ypsilanti. With a total cost of one hundred eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars for five months from June to October. And whereas Fed Up employs those who are unhoused, housing insecure, have felony records and others in order to build skills and the ability for their. in order to build skills and the ability for their employees to afford more safe and secure housing. And whereas the Fed Up proposal asks for fifty thousand dollars in support from the city of Ypsilanti. Now therefore be it resolved that we disburse fifty thousand dollars from the housing trust fund to support the staffing, access to showers and food programming being offered by Fed Up Ministries in partnership with efforts to support our most vulnerable populations and I so move.
Support. The move by Councilmember Simmons, supported by Councilmember King. Councilmember Simmons, you brought this forward. Do you have anything to say before we start discussion?
No, I, I know the proposal was shared with council.
Councilmember Tucson?
Um, yes, I, I know that fifty thousand was, was budgeted into the housing trust fund, but what is the current, the current balance in the trust fund as a whole?
This would, we've used the other money that was in there for barrier busters. So this would be the rest of what is in there for this year. And then for, but then in our last budget, we also added fifty thousand dollars, so.
So it's fifty for this year, then we added fifty for the next budget fiscal year and the one after that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, questions? Mayor Pro Tem, thank you.
So there hasn't been a dispersment this year to barrier busters.
Yeah, yes.
If I could, there was a dispersment to barrier busters. I'd have to check when it was approved. It was budgeted during the last budget cycle. And there was a dispersment. I'm not entirely sure the amount in total, but I do believe we're correct. I, I believe so. And I'd, I'd have to check that account. But more than likely, if council approves this, it would have to, it would be expended in the next fiscal year.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
So the fifty thou, so was, there was seventy-five thousand in there then? Are you saying, or there's fifty thousand and so?
I don't, I don't, I'd have to check the account, but I don't know that that, that's in there. If it is in there, then yes, we could, we could expend it. But I don't have that information.
But we, the last budget, we had budgeted seventy-five thousand and twenty-five was for barrier busters, which was dispersed, I think, and probably November, December would have been when I would have brought that. And then, and then this is the other fifty thousand. So it should be there. That's what we did. We did put it there and we only dispersed the twenty-five thousand that we had named for barrier busters.
Thank you. Further comment? Well, Mayor Pro Tem, what you done when?
Um, I do have questions and comments.
Did you want to keep going?
Sure, possible. Some questions have been raised by folks about accountability and the transparency of, of finances with, with Fed Up Ministries. In fact, the person, one of those people is sitting in the back of the room. So I'll ask the question, you know, is like, how do we, how do we know where this money goes and what's, what's built into this? When I deal with grants, there are reports due and, and, and budgets that specifically line out what, what the money's going to be spent for. I know in a general sense, what the money's getting spent for, but you know, how do we do that accounting so that we have that? When we send money to barrier busters, we rely on the county for that oversight in terms of how that money gets spent. And that goes out to lots of different agencies. Use it throughout the county. I like the fact that this is directed towards, towards Ypsilanti. You know, when we send stuff to barrier busters, I'm sure a lot of that goes to people in, in Ypsilanti, but Thank you.
Been able to get that track.
What's that?
We, we have received reports on that where they show that it, oh, I'm not likely to our.
Okay, I don't, I don't recall seeing those, but I was understanding that. So I was wondering if there's a way that we can, you know, with any grant, which this isn't really a grant, it's an allocation. So with grants, there's that kind of accountability built in with those reports. So I'd be willing to support this if we had that feedback. And how we can, how we can build that into this. Arrangement.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, so I will just say too that there, I, I will say that actually a lot of grants are also moving away from certain kinds of reporting, like in, in lots of ways because it winds up actually becoming burdensome. So I will say, I just want to like name that, that there's a lot of movement away from, away from that in the field, especially for, you know, certain amounts. And then the other thing I would just say is to me, you know, when thinking about like where it's going, I mean, we can, I, I think we could always ask, I mean, and I would say that I feel like this is the kind of thing you can like really see, you know, when I'm just like down there, you see how many people are there. Getting food and understanding the cost of food and things like that. So I will just say that I think some of these things we actually can like probably see also, because it is happening like out in the open and right here in, in understanding what some of that looks like. But I wonder if, if we could put something forward and ask for at the end. So at the end of the season, or these five months, if we can, you know, ask for that, like a report of about, you know, like average, you know, meals and people who've come through their services and things like that. Just in the ways that they're already collecting. So I wouldn't want to add like another kind of collection for this, but if there's ways of thinking about, you know, what they already, I'm talking about data that they already would be gathering. Data that they'd already be gathering and ask them for like maybe a presentation at the end of the season, which I think could be helpful in terms of thinking about what's going on in the downtown, that downtown area and how successful this intervention was. You know, overall, so this is, yeah. If that kind of would address that concern.
Uh, in the resolution, it indicates a proposal with a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollar amount. It's not in the packet and I'm wondering, I don't recall it in previous packets. Was it, has it been in one?
Met to us by Councilmember Simmons before our pre-last meeting.
And then I think the updated information was sent to everyone also directly from.
There was no additional data sent to all of council, no.
There is a law that the city can only spend money for a public purpose. And you have to be able to justify that. Now I've sent out memos in the past with some of the MML and treasury indications of what is a public purpose. In a situation like this, I'd recommend in regard to what Mayor Pro Tem has mentioned, that the city have a contract with this company that will delineate what the money will be used for and the reporting and so on. We could prepare such a contract and perhaps you would authorize a manager to sign it with approval of the city attorney.
That kind of leads into one of, something that I want us to, to talk about in looking at this. And this is not necessarily directly correlated with Fed Up, but just looking at the, the, the different types of requests that we, we have been getting and that we get and funding for a nonprofit. And so I feel like as we open the door to giving funds out to, to support folks who are providing services, which the services are wonderful. We are also opening ourselves up for more requests. And what happens when another nonprofit shows up and says, well, we're also doing good in the community and providing services to members of the community. We, we would like to make a request for an allocation and that becomes a slippery slope. And so I personally feel like it would be really important for us to have a process for folks to ask us for things like this. If this is what, if this is what we're going to do with that housing trust fund money, just like we have a process for our mini grants for the young folks who are coming. And they have to fill out an application, provide us with information and vet that out and come and deliberate about it at council. I do think it would be more, you know, responsible of us to have some type of process for things like this to, to come forward and to happen in the future, because as we've seen with, you know, fee waivers, special events, all these things, once you do it, then there are going to be more folks who feel like they also are equally doing great work and also would like to request funds from us. And I don't want us to get into the habit of picking and choosing and, you know, one-off situations. And then what happens when we have to, or, or we do, you know, decline other folks who feel like they are also doing great work. The other piece of this that I would add, so that's separate, how I've been thinking about this. Mr. Bar, I appreciate what you just shared because I still, I do agree that we need some type of record keeping if this is going to happen for us to track information that could be data that Fed Up is already collecting, but in some type of report and then some type of contract to, you know, buying that we get that information. And again, I can't make any motions or amendments, but I also feel like the funds, the twenty-five thousand that we've expended for barrier busters again has gone to, directly to four eight one nine seven and nine eight individuals to maintain them, their housing. So to keep them housed, whether that's evictions, utility assistance, direct correlation to keeping them housed. And so while I understand the need for the, the fifty thousand and I looked at the information that we've received, I would not want to expend more than that twenty-five thousand for this personally, to keep it in line with what we've done to support community members in this other vein. And that's simply because I'm looking at, there are other opportunities for us to again, continue to support. We expended that money with barrier busters so quickly in the last years that we've utilized it because there are so many folks who also are trying to maintain their housing that I, I'm just wanting to make sure that we take an approach that is responsible with this.
Councilmember McLean.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate your comments. I think I agree with them. Wholeheartedly also agree with what Council Bar has, has shared with us. And I, I do think the approach of of a contract that could include some kind of final reporting that could be negotiated so that it's not overly burdensome. But it does give us the accountability that we need with public funds. So I think both of those are, are good ideas. And I think in the spirit of, of the mayor's comments and worried as well about the precedent of a large sum, I would move to amend and amend the amount from fifty thousand to twenty thousand. So move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion on amending to twenty thousand. Mayor Pro Tem.
Is this contingent on the contract as well?
Madam Mayor, it's, it's not been, in order to not complicate things, I've not made that motion, but I would certainly be receptive. I'll make a motion later to that if it's desired or others can make it, and I'd certainly support it as well.
Councilmember Simmons?
So how was twenty thousand selected? Given the information that you've looked at, I just wonder how that amount was selected because it almost sounds arbitrary to me.
It was arbitrary.
Okay, well, and then the other thing is that if we don't expend that money, right, it actually doesn't go toward another purpose like this. So that's the other thing. Is if we don't use the money that we have budgeted for this purpose, which we decided we voted on the budget the last year, that there is enough need in our community to support vulnerable populations, which is to me what the housing trust fund is about doing, is supporting vulnerable populations. And so if we actually don't expend this money, the money actually just goes back into our general fund, which I know some people are really, would be really happy with, but it actually doesn't then go to that purpose because it doesn't roll over. So that was what was also made clear during our conversations with the budget. Is that that money doesn't actually, which I originally thought that the money would sit there, but that the money doesn't actually sit in the housing trust fund. So it doesn't roll forward for us to have for future use. And so if we don't use it, then it goes to nothing. And so I mean, I have concerns about that, but also about a cutting of an amount without, you know, real reason for money that we have already budgeted for.
Hold on one second. Do you want to respond to that?
So to my colleague, first of all, I apologize if I seem flip. There's, I, I suspect that whether we did twenty thousand, fifty thousand or a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, that it probably could be put to good use. No matter what that is. So the twenty thousand is not a scientific number by any stretch, and that was what I was trying to indicate. But to the mayor's point, that if we do this for one, others will surely be lining up as well. I think that's a valid point and, and the dollars are, are finite. I can see allocations to barrier busters. I can see allocations to other organizations as well. I would also, to, to your point about the funds, going back to the general fund, if we end up having a balance at the year end, I could also see in effect, rolling that forward for a future year if that's something that this council wants to, wants to do. I think we'd have that conversation. But I do think to back to an earlier point, we should do it through some kind of a, of a process that gives everyone notice in the community that these funds are potentially available and make some determination about which one serves the greatest public use.
The other thing I would just add is that this is also, you know, in terms of saying like, well, everyone will want money, you know. Just to also name that, I think that, you know, we do have discretion in this and also recognizing that this is an intervention in a direct area that took up actually a lot of our time and attention last year. And that we had, I mean, the council chambers were full of people who were angry with council actually for not doing and not responding. And what has happened is that we have, we are relying now on nonprofit partners to try to help solve and provide services that we are not providing. And so I just, I think that there's a difference between thinking about like general nonprofits doing good work in community. Love you all, everyone. And thinking about where we're trying to work in partnership with organizations that are addressing need that has boiled over and has become really something that has involved the wider city directly. And so it's not just about like doing good work. I see this as a direct response. And how much is the city helping to support that direct response? So I think that there are some different things that we can think about. And I think, you know, we have a process for the mini grants because that's kind of open and, you know, kind of in general, whereas I'm not suggesting that we're you know, always going to necessarily say, okay, this is to this nonprofit, this is to this one, or like to say that we want to hold money for general good services. And I say this as a person who works for a nonprofit, right? Like, so, but I think that this feels like it's a direct response and and as we have already heard, it's already making a difference in the space. And so I see this as a direct, whether we're going to, you know, actually put forward in this service that we're, you know, I guess, you know, this is public-private partnership, you know, and so whether we're trying to support this service, which is actually supporting not only the people there who are taking part in receiving services, but also our wider community is also benefiting. So I see that as a larger a larger benefit than just to the users of, of that service.
Jabar?
On a historical note, this is not the first time the council has wrestled with this type of situation. Many years ago, when the city was getting federal revenue sharing and other state sharing, and we had a very sizable fund balance. The city council would budget a certain amount per year for something like social concerns. And then they would have one meeting a year where the social, where the people that wanted the money would come in and present their as a proposal to city council and then city council would assign the money out as to the parties that they desired with a contract for each of those, those ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Bar. Mayor Pro Tem, I saw your hand first a little while ago. Okay, Councilmember Sweet? Okay, Councilmember Sweet?
I think I mentioned it, maybe a little, alluded to it in the beginning when I first spoke about this. But in the resolution, it alludes right to the proposal, and to my knowledge, the proposal's not been included in any public meeting packets. So I have concerns about us allocating funding with cost numbers and allusions to a proposal when it's not, when that proposal's not been in any public council meeting packets, so that it's available, available for people to see. So, um, I wish that would have been included in here, um, if we're to allocate these amounts and these amounts that are referenced.
Thank you. Further comment, oh, Councilmember King?
I'm a little nervous, but I would say I also have question about the amount, because the amount, Mayor, that you proposed was twenty five. And the proposal went under that amount. We know other agencies may come and ask for money, but we do know, as Councilmember Simmons said, there is a need for this in our community. And we have heard from community members that changes have been made from even just last year.
Thank you. Further comments or discussion on the amendment that was proposed? Cause that's what's on the floor right now, is the amendment from Councilmember McLean, twen- of twenty thousand. Yeah, did you raise your hand?
It's just on the amendment. I'm, I'm talking.
This is on the, this is on the amendment, cause we have an amendment on the floor. All right. Seeing none, please call the role on the amendment.
Councilmember Sweet?
No.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
No.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen?
No.
Mayor Brown?
No.
All right. So we're back to the original resolution. Mayor Pro Tem?
I would, uh, I just want to say that I want to see Fed Up, uh, supported by the city budget in, in some way, shape or form. But I also, uh, acknowledge the comments of, of, uh, Councilmember Sweet, that this has not been proposed in a, in a public, uh, agenda, and I think that's an important point. I also think that the, the contract needs to be dealt with too. So, um, I would, uh, move that we, uh, postpone this, uh, until our next meeting, at which time, uh, I would like to see a contract and proposal in the public minutes in the agenda.
So there's a motion. Is there support?
Support.
The movement's supported. When we discuss postponement, I always mess this up.
The specific date.
Can we, can we discuss that? Okay, so discussion.
My one, my one thing I would like to add would be that um, for postponing, that we're still drawing from the money that we have budgeted for this year. I don't want, what I don't want is that it moves to the next fiscal year, and then the money that we currently have budgeted disappears, and we move into the money that we have budgeted for the next year. Is that making sense? So I would just, so I don't know, this is a friendly, do you see? So I would just, I don't know if this isn't to the friendly that, that we are holding our current, this money from our current budget and it's part of that. Cause we're, we're just, yes. So I just know that, cause I, yeah. So that would be my only, my addition to it, um, in terms of thinking about that.
Oh, City Manager, I guess that's, or maybe Mr. Bar, is that, the, the question is, like, our next meeting is after the fiscal year is over. So would we be able to make, make sure that the funds come from the budget, even though that, those books would be closed after June thirtieth?
It would come out of the, the next fiscal year's fund.
Yeah, it would come out of our new fiscal year, if we don't do it today. Or do something, you know, move something to. Mayor Pro Tem?
It's also possible to allocate more money into that budget and make a budget.
No, well, I mean, yeah, sure, we need five people to do so. And, you know, so I just feel like this is the thing where we know we have the mu- I'm sorry, let me just stop. Cause it feels like we know we have the money, but then we're gonna pull from money that's in the future, which means we won't be able to do something later. You know? Cause it will come out that same pot. Cause this money is allocated through the Housing Trust Fund. So the Housing Trust Fund will be replicated with new money. But that doesn't mean it's the same money. So either, we need to figure that. Yeah. Okay.
I also understand that this wasn't brought forward with everything necessary for everybody to agree to it, so. There's that.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, the, everybody, so I understand this question about the proposal, but everybody had the proposal. So whether it was attached to this, I mean, but everyone did have it during the last meeting, and nobody's said anything at that point that it needed something new. So it wasn't a new proposal. So I can understand that. But it's also, I mean, if anybody had questions, I mean, any of, they could.
I don't think that's what's the discussion is, is that we had it, but the public didn't get to see it, is what I think. Is that what you originally were getting at? Is that it wasn't publicly presented in a packet or for folks to re- to look at? So we did have it and we talked about it.
And, yeah, we.
But I think Councilmember Sweet's point, I'm just trying to clarify, is that it wasn't presented to the public, because it.
Well, they did get here, we did when we had the conversation. I mean, that was, I will say, like, those amounts and things were named during the last conversation, during our public meeting. So I understand that they didn't see that whole thing, but I'm just, anyway, like. Yeah. So I'll leave that at that. So I understand this other piece. It just, it feels really, this feels like really hard when we know, like, what we know and that we're about to be in a situation where taking money, we're taking, we're always asking the most vulnerable to wait and see and to take less. And then we're also now saying what we believe was fair, that we want to actually give even less than that. That's what will be the outcome. So you talk about unintended consequences. Unintended consequences are that we are going to say that a decision that we made as a council is going to now kind of be backtrack. Um, and then that, in the future, that we won't be able to, to have that. We won't be able to have those funds.
Mayor Pro Tem?
So if we allocate fifty thousand dollars to, to Fed Up at our next meeting, they receive fifty thousand dollars for their programming for this year regardless.
Yes.
So it doesn't matter whether it comes out of this budget, year before June or after June. But my point is, if this was to go through with all of that, then it should have been presented in that way. So saying that we're delinquent in doing that, it, it falls on, the proposal itself is not complete. So they'll get their money and we'll complete the process and it doesn't matter to Fed Up whether it comes out of this budget or the next, and we can make a budget amendment to put more money into the housing.
Potentially.
I understand, I understand. I'm sorry, I'm sorry I was delinquent. I didn't know. Because I thought the i- issue was, do we have the information? And is the information carried forward in the public form? So what it feels like, I'll, I'll, so I'll just say that. So that's fine. But that was not communicated to me before when we had the conversation. That's why I like to bring conversations forward. So that people can say, oh, this is what I feel like I need in order to be able to deliberate or make a decision. So this is new information. But the information was there. So that's the thing. So I understand what you're saying, and I'll know better for next time to over, oh, you know, we can just have more reading. But we already had it. So it wasn't a surprise. That's what I'm saying, is council has had it.
Right.
To be able to make a decision. So what we're saying now is that we can't make a decision without all information. But I mean, I mean, we kind of do that in, in, anyway, but.
Well, to add to that.
We made decisions, I think, that weren't part of public information.
Was made to us an hour before we deliberate last time, in an email that I didn't even see until after the meeting started.
It was just a question. It was just a discussion at that.
Right. So if, if that were the case, then why not put it forward with, with more information?
Well, I was just referring back to it in here. So it wasn't like, please, no, I'm not trying to hide information. Um, it was shared with all seven of us on this body. So that's the, that's what I will say, is that it wasn't that it was withheld. I just did not think that to attach it to this resolution again, because we already had that information. And people were like, we didn't have a chance to read it, understandably. So that's, so, you know, but then we would have had it for the past two weeks.
So I, what I'll say about this discussion that's happening down there is again, aside from it being a, a, about Fed Up, cause I don't, this is not about Fed Up for me in terms of what we're discussing here. But we get complaints also about packets that don't have information in them from the community all the time. And so while I know what I read and I know what we're looking at here, um, I think process has been that we provide information so that it is published for the public. And I think, I'm just trying to clear up what this, what is the contentious point between council members down here? Is that it wasn't presented to the community in the ways that we've been expected to present other information? We provide council packets, or we provide information for the packet. Um, and so if folks feel like they need that to move forward, there's an amendment on the floor right now that we have to make a decision about. Um, and we should make a decision about that, so that we can go get back to the, either the original resolution or moving forward.
Can we restate the amendment, please?
Mayor Pro Tem, I think you made that.
His amendment was to postpone this.
Oh, sorry, to postpone this until a contract is written. Okay. So that is the discussion currently on the table, is to postpone this to the next meeting, pending creation of a contract, or something of the sort in those words. So not so many words. Okay. And also provide the supporting documentation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So is there further discussion on the current item on the table to postpone to the next meeting with a contract and additional information? All right. Seeing none, that's Acting Clerk John.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Okay. So this will come back at the next meeting. Okay, next, oh, Mr. Bar.
Uh, I take this as a direction to prepare a contract, so if anyone has information on it, please get it to me.
And can we also note that the information that was already shared with council be added to the, because it's already been shared with everybody on that thread?
Uh, Mr. Bar, I can forward you that. Councilmember Simmons, you have our next resolution.
Yes. Resolved by the Cit- Council of the City of Ypsilanti. Resolution declaring that the investigation and arrest of individuals in possession of a controlled substance in an amount sufficient only for personal use. If evidence is present that a controlled substance was obtained as a result of participation in, or the individual in possession of a controlled substance is a participant, staff member or volunteer of a quantitative drug checking program, or individuals in possession of drug paraphernalia. If evidence is present that paraphernalia was obtained as a result of participation in, or the individual in possession of paraphernalia is a participant, staff member or volunteer of a syringe service program be the lowest priority for the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas for decades, America has been in the throes of a devastating opioid epidemic. Opioid overdoses have claimed the lives of over a million Americans since nineteen ninety nine. Tragically, drug overdose deaths nationally have continued to rise on an annualized basis. No community has been spared from the opioid epidemic's devastation. And whereas between sixty to eighty people in Washington County, of Washington County's residents have lost their lives each year due to opioid overdoses, overdoses. The most recent years preliminary data suggests a minuscule decrease with fifty six Washington resident, residents losing their life to an opioid overdose in twenty twenty three. But even one overdose death is too many, and this de- decrease is likely a wobble. Like previous ones where, that were met with exponentially high curves after, that were worse. It is imperative that government actors do all they can to save lives. And whereas with the prevalence of, uh, drug contamination, there has never been a more critical moment to know precisely what compounds and how much are present in a drug, in drug supplies. Those who use drugs should be able to avoid unwittingly taking drugs that could lead to overdose. And whereas quantitative drug checking programs can work only if people feel comfortable bringing a sample for testing. If people fear that providing samples for testing could subject them to criminal consequences, they will be extraordinarily unlikely to provide such samples for testing that could lead to more overdoses, more deaths, and delayed or incomplete information about the community's drug supply. And whereas the Washington County Prosecutor's Office has released an initial draft of a policy committing to forego prosecution of possession of, one, trace amounts of drugs that were, two, provided for quantitative drug checking, inconsistent with the statutory standard for good Samaritans seeking overdose attention. The Prosecutor's Office also will not prosecute possession of a controlled substance in an amount sufficient only for personal use. If the evidence that a person possessed a controlled substance was obtained as a result of participation in quantitative drug checking program. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti consistently ranks within the highest number of non-fatal and fatal overdoses within mi- reported within municipalities in Wayne and Washington County. And, uh, read the rest into the record. And I still move.
And moved by Councilmember Simmons, supported by Councilmember King. Councilmember King or Simmons, do you have anything to lay out before we get into discussion?
I would just say, um, so Korn, uh, brought this forward and, um, has been keeping us updated, um, as different things have been happening um, within the county prosecutor's office, uh, to keep track of this. And knowing that, and, um, I know we had like a presentation about the different testing, um, equipment, and I see this really, um, as, um, a big need. I mean, I'm, well, I will talk about this later, but I mean, just the other day, we saw, um, an instance at the, um, uh, transit center, um, where there was a response. And so, um, yeah, I mean, I could say more, but I think that that's, there's a lot in the resolution in and of itself, so.
Amen discussion from council.
This question probably best addressed to Chief Moore. Um, Chief, when we were to pass something like this, uh, direct, direct to your officers to make this the lowest priority, tell me what that kind of direction does for, I mean, what, how do they, how do they react? What, how should they react? What's the? Give you enough guidance to?
Yeah, it, it's a, there's a lot of language in, in this, uh, proposal. Uh, as a chief of police, um, I don't support, uh, this proposal in, in its format. And here's, here's why. If this body sees it that they want to put in a mechanism to test, uh, you know, narcotics for, uh, for people who utilize, uh, those things, then so be it. In the past three months, we've had two arrests for possession of a controlled substance. Both of those arrests was a result of the individuals having felony warrants. One, we took to the hospital. And both, it was just search incident, uh, to arrest. We had to search them before they, uh, went into the hospital. So I say that when we talk about, um, you know, what problem are we, are we trying to solve? We have to have the ability to, uh, address illicit narcotic sales and possessions in the city of Ypsilanti by directing your public safety to not, uh, you know, enforce those laws. Now, and I'll say this, we're not gonna be at whatever place looking for people. looking for people as soon as they, you know, test their narcotics, now we're going to, you know, swoop in and make an arrest. That's, that's ludicrous. But I'll also say this. The community. These neighborhoods, business owners. I've had a line of people in my office, they're coming to me now. They're, they're, they're no longer sending emails, they're making appointments in person asking for help and it's all centered around this very topic. So we have people in our neighborhood saying, please, please, please. Help us do something to help keep our community safe. I don't see this as a measure that makes our community safe. And I understand we start talking about harm reduction and and all of these uh things. The safety of this community is going to be a collective effort. And those that are uh that seek help and want help. There's not a person in this room, I don't think in this community, that wouldn't bend over backwards to help them. The intent of public safety, you know, under my leadership. We're not out trying to do harm to people. We're not out trying to unnecessarily uh burden society and create uh, you know, more conflict. We understand that people, you know, ebb and flow and they have uh uh different scenarios in their life. But to take away or try to diminish the ability of your public safety to act when it needs to act. I think it's negligent, I think it's detrimental to uh, you know, to this community, I really do.
Thank you. Did you have additional questions? No? Thank you. Uh, council member Simmons?
Yes, thank you. So I have a few questions for you. So in this, it's it, you know, especially when thinking about the situations that you're talking about. Obviously, those folks were not per um participating in a drug checking program as there's not one yet, correct?
I'm just telling you, these, these are the amounts of uh arrests that we've had in the last three months surrounding possession of a controlled substance in the city of Ypsilanti. So to equate that the Ypsilanti Police Department that we're just making massive arrests and it's stopping people from wanting to uh get help.
Oh, that's not, I mean, that's not what I'm saying. I think what the situation is, is that people are not seeking help and they're taking the narcotics that have uh dangerous levels of very toxic things and that they don't have a place and a way to test it. And that they would not use a place to test it because they would be concerned, even if the police say, we're not going to hang out there. That's not going to matter to anybody, right? And so the, those concern and the way that this ordinance is, is it specifically is talking about people that are connected with a program. And um, and I'll also say when I, I did ask about, you know, how this, how would that be uh typically quantified or known? And there's um some kind of, I mean, we can ask for more specifics, but ways that people are identified, they actually, you know, just like, you know, I don't want to say like, you know, a card, but it's something that would identify that they're part of a program which so that it would be different and also the amounts would be different too, right? And so I just want to put, point that out that in this, it's not saying that any possession is um, is not is not to be investigated or, you know, sought for all these different things. But it's specifically uh in terms of people who would be staffing and working at this place as well as people who would be bringing um, bringing part of their um dose, that's not the word, part of their supply, right? Which is already a big deal for them to even put some of their supply out for testing. But um, so I just want to name that to say that, you know, one, being able to have that, that creates more safety. And the idea that we don't, we have fewer people um in very public places ODing, right? This is what we have right now. And so um, when I hear people saying that they want us to do something and to sup- do, to do something and to support it. Um, I see this as being one way to do that because if we can find a way to help people to not um or to reduce the risk of life ending um intake, that that can both help. And then there was also the concern about how that connects to other resources. And one of the things that I also know and have seen with, you know, when, when looking at these different kind of programs is they actually come alongside with different resources, different ways to help people to find resources and, you know, um I remember this is sat with me, Korn one time said, uh, a dead person can't um choose to recover. Thank you. So a dead person can't choose to recover. And so um, but what we know in these kind of programs and with people who are approaching these programs in a different way than saying, you know, there's one thing to say, hey, this person's doing something that they shouldn't do. And then that's the approach, which I know is, I've heard from police officers, this approach. Versus someone saying, hey, I know you have, um, you know, this is an issue. We want to make sure that you're safe and we also want to make sure that you know what your options are and that we are here to help support you. Um, I feel like people are more likely to be able to recover in that kind of instance, which, which leads to overall safety. So I don't think this is hamstringing you from doing other things.
So what I'm saying is if you want to provide that service to the community, um, I don't, I don't have any objections to you providing that to the community. What I'm saying is not trying to diminish the capabilities in quite frankly, the responsibility of public safety. Don't take away that too. Because we're going to need to use it because we still have other problems. Then the other thing I will say is this, you know, you said that's one way. But there's other ways as well. Like let's put our focus on really preventing people from getting to that point in the first place.
I mean, please, you, you got me on prevention all the time.
Well, you know, so again, I'm not saying not to do with, you know, that piece. I'm talking about the part of it where we're trying to diminish uh the role and the responsibility of public safety. That's what I'm talking about, the, the, the act and uh putting those things in place to help people. I got no issues with that whatsoever.
So what would you suggest to the question of people won't use it if they feel that the police will be there?
Oh.
I mean, that's a real, I mean, I, I mean, do you, you understand that that's a real question.
Right, and so the, with the police were everywhere and people are still uh using, right? So to say.
But this will be a specific place, right?
Exactly, so a specific place, if there's a specific place that's designated by this, this uh, this body and you have equipment to test um, you know, uh illicit narcotics for unsafe amounts of uh whatever substance. That's, we're, we're not going to interfere with that. But there are going to be times outside of testing in whatever facility you, you uh determine that we still need to address criminality.
Ted, I'd like to interject here, um, there's a clause at the end of this that didn't get read um for this that I think addresses your point. And it says, resolve that this resolution does not provide protection from arrest or prosecution if one charges are sought by law enforcement or possession of controlled substance sufficient only for personal use. And two, there is sufficient evidence to authorize that the charge does not stem from participation in a quantitative drug checking program. APAs should authorize that charge, uh assuming charges are in the interest of the just, of justice. That is true, even if the would be defendants supposedly participate in a quantitative drug checking program. So that clause gets at your issue that you still need to have the tools to be able to deal with things. It gets at the, the issue of um protecting uh folks going to and from drug checking and the people that work at it. So I think it, I think it serves both purposes and it doesn't, doesn't hamstring it in that way, so.
The only other thing I would add is, you know, so this is consistent with language from the county prosecutor's office. And so what I would just name is that like, I know, I know it feels that, you know, we should just be like, yes, like the police won't, the police won't bother folks, you know, but the thing is, is that sometimes it's even the fear of it. And it's like, I mean, I, I know that this is not a surprise that people don't trust the police. Police chief, come on now, like there, I don't think that you just saying it makes it so people believe that will be the case. And to me, the fact that this is being drawn up at the county level also points to the need to address it. And that there must be some reason why people seek and seek these kinds of protections. So I just, I don't, I, that's why I was asking, well, what is it that you feel would be necessary? Is it, you know, what would be the thing for how to determine if somebody is participating in this program? Like those things feel like, okay, like there's some clarity that could be, you know, made for that once we're actually at that point, at this point, we're just trying to get that process started. And to be aligned with the prosecutor um for that, given what we know is happening here all the time. And that, and that's not only ones where we have response of our emergency services. We know that there are people who are ODing that aren't, that are being revived by people just in space. And so um, and so there, it's just a lot of people. It's just like, it just feels like a lot because I know I've personally witnessed just being in space within the past month, like two. And so um so to me, I just, I just feel like, like I, I want, like I am sympathetic and I, I don't want to create a situation where um there are issues doing your job. I do, I just, I do think that a lot of these things, there's a lot of these clauses that do try to make that very clear and also make it very clear when somebody's doing, you know, participating in a program specifically. So I um, I just, you know, that's why I was like hoping like if there was something that's like, yeah, this would help me feel more comfortable or things like that. But it sounds like what you're saying is that you're uncomfortable with it overall and that the way we should deal with it is just to tell people that the police won't be stalking this space.
Council, uh, Councilman Wilcoxen shed some light on that. I think that's a, a good starting point. I think if, if someone, if there's a designated space and people are at that space and they're participating in a program, then law enforcement is not going to be at that program trying to uh make arrests and, and interfere with people in recovery. I mean, even to, you know, we talk about uh fed up ministries and, and these other pieces. They ask us, the police, not to be present when they're trying to do services. And what do we do? We absolutely accommodate that. So you, when you talk about trust and, and all of these things, I think it goes both ways. The police are not going to be in a, a recovery space trying to arrest people for possession of, of narcotics. So, you know, I think maybe you word, you know, you shore up uh the wording in those things, uh this is just, it's my role and my responsibility, this is what I believe. Uh, there are more um there are more, there's this entire community to provide public safety for and not just a small group, but the entire community.
Is there a comment from anyone else on council? Any questions? In that case, um, I would call for the vote. Thank you, chief. Council member Simmons.
Yes.
Council member McLean.
No.
Council member King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Council member Sweet.
No.
Council member Tucson.
No.
You have a tie. I were waiting on. I'll wait on mayor. Next on the agenda, let's see, is a discussion for uh regarding community benefits ordinance. I believe that uh Councilperson Simmons brought this forward. Anything to start the discussion?
Um, yeah, so this was just uh at the last meeting, we said that we wanted to do, that we were going to be looking back at the CBO. And I wanted to create space for us to actually talk about what that process would be.
You have a proposal for that process or you asking a question to get more input?
I don't know what would be best at this point because.
Okay. I, 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 I take the point, there's, there's lots of ways we can go about doing this. So there's been talk about.
We've, yeah, we talked.
Whereas folks have, they've talked about bringing this before HRC to have them uh go over it. There are uh community organizations that are looking at this. And so the question of whether we uh I don't want to say charge, but ask, request that HRC review this and bring uh suggestions forward. But that doesn't exclude um council from, from having that discussion ourselves and, and bringing proposed uh amendments to this.
Yeah, I think that one of, one of the things is just thinking about how people, how we are getting that input and what that looks like. And so, yeah, I think whatever um format allows that to happen and maybe have more, more conversation, perhaps that could happen better in one of our commissions. Um, because even if we do a work session, um, it still tends to be pretty one way. And so if we were able to have more of that discussion with the community on it, which is how this was brought forward and in the first place. I, I think the most important thing is that we maintain some of that connection um and ability for that kind of discussion and input. And um, so that would be the main thing of just like thinking about that and then thinking about what that timing would look like.
Are you thinking that there would be uh surveys put forward by, by council to start that discussion off in, in um HRC?
You said surveys?
Yeah. Maybe, maybe not.
I wasn't, I would, I mean, I personally wasn't thinking about a survey in particular, because.
I was just trying to gauge how, how you get the input, either having meetings, have surveys, have.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, I mean, I could see that, I mean, like, I, because I was thinking, like, I'm thinking about, like, who would we want to talk to? Obviously, there's uh the ready group, but I also think all the people who have participated in the um the three CBOs, the CBA, the three CBAs that have happened. I think, you know, that would be like, you know, something to go out to them, to invite them to a conversation about it, I think would make sense too. Um, as well as obviously the general public, you know, um, so uh yeah, so anyway, that would be, those would be the things, like, that's what I was thinking about, like, how to make sure that we are being able to invite some particular folks as well, in addition to the general public into a conversation about like what some of those changes might be. Um, so that we can then have um, you know, be able to put something forward that we can talk about at the council table.
When is the next HRC meeting?
June the twenty-sixth, seventh.
That's the, June twenty-seventh is the joint meeting, I believe.
We will meet for one hour prior to the joint meeting.
And then our next meeting is?
July second.
July second. Anyone else care to weigh in on this, uh, conversation?
Oh, I'll just add that, um, um, I definitely think it's something that we need to reinstate. Um, I think it's, we've seen it work in different ways and I think there's, um. An opportunity for, you know, feedback based on what's worked and what hasn't worked. So, but I think it's something that definitely I'd like to see returned.
And I would be in agreement of that.
In terms of any ideas on.
Process.
Process, yeah.
Yeah, which would be, you know, you said HRC, but I know the Sustainability Commission was also. Focused on this and it also put forward resolution in support of the CBO, um, previously. So I don't know what, like, I'm just trying to think like where, what might be best if we, if we thought it would be good to have a conversation. In a commission, at a commission level first, or if, or if there's a way for that. Conversation to happen directly during a council session.
Shudder at the thought of calling a special meeting for this. I don't think. Turn town halls get us where we need to get one.
Yeah.
Would it be, maybe this is, but would it be a wild idea to bring back like people that have previously served? Um, the committee for these to see, because they were directly a part of the process to see like what. How they think it could have been better or like, or what changes could be made since they lived it? That may be a little more complicated and complex, but, um, just to have that firsthand feedback from them.
So myself and Joe were a part of two of the, the three processes. So we've kind of been bouncing ideas off each other. How to have the same type of outcome, but simplify it a little bit. So we've been having conversations, but I think it would make sense to. Get input from the, the, the commissions as well, maybe HRC and sustainability can have discussions about this and. You know, we could, we could all, we could get what they suggest and then we can get what HRC suggests. And then what staff suggests and kind of look at them all together and say, okay, where do these overlap? Where is maybe one idea better than another? I think it's just having a lot of perspectives, look at this and then bring it all together and then try to. You know, mesh all the, the good that was come up together and then maybe get rid of some that we feel. Are, are not necessary or don't necessarily work.
Yeah, I think it would be great to, if we had something where we could gather this information, this feedback and then put forward. And then, you know, and then if we then have as part of a work session or something where. We're able to take all of that and put out a presentation based on, you know, things staff has had, you know, if council has, you know, things. And then community, so we could put that forward and then have a conversation based on what those different changes might be.
So then, excuse me, we can request that Sustainability Commission and, um, HRC. Um, add this to their agendas at their next meeting. Uh, have staff, uh, bring forward information at the, uh, next meeting in July. Um, if that's. Not too soon.
That work good.
For that, you seem to have been having those conversations. And then the question is, how do we engage the previous members of the, the three committees? Um, and whether we bring them in, whether we, we invite, uh. Comment, written comments, um, that's where survey, maybe not, but. I'm sure everybody that was involved in that is fairly, fairly engaged and could give a written comment as well, but, um. But I would like to give them, uh, a space to, to voice that as well in a, in a meeting. So, um, we could put a, not necessarily on the next meeting, but the, another meeting in July. Have a discussion so that they're going to be public comment and, and specifically invite those folks to, to that meeting.
The only amendment I would make is, um, I know some of the commissions are. Like I know the Sustainability Commission's not meeting in July, so the next meeting wouldn't be until August.
I could also add that, uh, council has passed a, a resolution making the current CBO policy until something's adopted. So I don't think this, I think we need to start definitely, but I don't think we need to try to get it done by July. I think having it done perhaps by the end of the summer, September is a, a reasonable timeline in order to, uh. To really flush this out and make sure moving forward it has, it's exact, well, not exactly, because things are always going to change. But it's a, a very good document and how to, uh, move forward from here.
There's no meeting in July, so we.
I'm remembering.
Uh, timeline, we've got one meeting in August. Yes. Councilwoman Clint.
Don't know if this is useful, but a couple of questions, thoughts. Um, one is, would it make sense to try to have a. A special meeting, a joint meeting of the two commissions? Or all the, I, I don't know if that's something we've ever done before, or if we should do it, or if it's logistically even feasible. Just a thought, throw that out there.
Sure.
Um, and secondly, I don't know if there's value in, we're looking at different models, seeing what other, other cities have done.
In terms of.
We're only the second to have an ordinance like this, so.
In terms of getting input or in terms of, uh, how to construct the ordinance?
How to construct the ordinance, but I was not aware that we were only one of two.
Yeah.
I mean, there might, who knows, there might be some sense.
I certainly know others have.
But.
Has they've been, have they been more project based?
So others places have used community benefits agreements, but not having an ordinance like we have. So Detroit was the first, we were the second. And there, it's possible that there's been some sense. I haven't kept up, I haven't seen more, but.
Mr. Sweet. In regards to the commissions that are weighing in, and maybe it's not because it's not in their purview, but does planning commission make sense? Cause this is mainly development centered for them to have input on this. Um, I know it's probably not. But they're more. Redden and what they, you know, are tasked with. But I just was, it's all around development. So I just wonder if that would make sense to have them be a part of it. Or if they have.
Makes sense to invite, I mean, I think we could invite all of our, you know, commissions, I think.
Lot of overlap.
Yeah, and I think about even, you know, right, even like in parks and art, some of the stuff that might come up might actually impact them.
Yeah.
So I just had said sustainability because I know that this has been something that they've been tracking and that they have put forward to count. They put forward stuff to council on that, um, in particular, um, and I don't, you know, and, you know, HRC. Um, you know, has expressed interest, I guess, too. So maybe that's why. So I mean, I think that it makes sense to invite, you know, the different folks. I'm not sure about like trying to do a special meeting with the. Or joint meeting with the commissions, but I do think that if we have, um, if we had some time when like. You know, I definitely think like sending invites to the commissions and to the folks who've served on the CBAs. Make to, make total sense and then, um, and then other people can come as interest, you know?
We could put forward, uh, a request, make the, the ordinance available, give, send a copy of the ordinance. And, uh, and a request for review to all of the commissions. They'll all meet within the next month, the month and a half, and then ask for input, um, after their next meeting. And then, uh, let's address this in council in, in August after they've all had a chance to be. And I take your point where the planning commission, I think is totally appropriate that they. Deliberate on this.
Yeah.
And at least have a discussion on it. Sound reasonable to folks? Then come back to us in January or January, August.
Did he say September?
Maybe, yeah, that, maybe that's when council can take it up.
Well, if the, in the next month, if, uh, any of the commissions aren't meeting in the month of July, then when they have their meeting. As sustainability is like early in August, right? And we've got one meeting in August, is that true? Depending on the timing of that, we can take it up in August and at that time, um, with or without the input from, from all the commission.
Do we want then, so city manager would then just coordinate however, to get that out to the commissions and then back to this group, back to us?
Yeah, it would be done through the staff liaison and clerks.
Nods of heads in agreement?
Okay, looks like our council meeting for twenty seven, August.
Oh, it's at the end, so it's probably going to be stacked with stuff between. End of July and August.
Nah, that never happens. Are we good on that discussion?
Sounds like it.
All right, the next item is a discussion regarding fee schedule. I'm not sure who brought this forward.
Uh, council, I brought this forward. Um, I'm planning to bring this, um. Uh, to the, the second for approval for this coming fiscal year. Um, I know there had been some, uh, concerns perhaps of, uh, past fees. I know we are going to be, um, increasing our building department fees, uh, specifically. Because we're implementing, implementing a, um, online payment system for those. It will be a tiered approach, but so those will be increasing. I just kind of wanted to give council, uh, an opportunity to maybe point out something that they want us to look into. Further, um, uh, prior to bringing it forward in, on July second.
Did you indicate your, what you're trying to reference to us with the, with the highlighted sections? Cause I'm assuming it was increases, but then there's other ones that have increases that were not highlighted.
I, I didn't, I don't know that the, the.
Or does it have significance?
Yeah. I don't think so. I think those are the ones that were increased, um. Uh, from the year prior or they're new.
Okay.
But that is just the, 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 the rough copy of our, our current.
Okay, thank you for that.
So some of these questions, cause since this is kind of a preliminary discussion, some of these might not. Be for us to necessarily jump into now, but I'll just put some things forward as part of this conversation. You know, um, one of the things that we've been hearing, uh, is that our fees are too high. Um, and this is why so many events are leaving. So it just made me wonder. Uh, whether we are charging fees that are very different from others. Um, you know, and thinking about the township, which also recognizing that we have, uh, different kinds of costs as well. Um, then I also was looking at like the inspections, um. And like re-inspections cost, um, and just was wondering if it costs us less to go back. Um, and if there's ways to incentivize not needing re-inspections or what kinds of things? What are the range of things that might be coming up in that space if it's, um. And, um. And then. There also, I mean, some, again, some of these are questions, like there was one for garden or vacant residential lots for twenty five dollars. So I just, I had a question, I was just having questions about that. Oh, wait, do you want all of them? Oh, oh, okay, yes.
Oh, first off, uh, re-inspections are typically, uh, a lot less taxing on our staff. Because they have a list of things they're looking for instead of looking for everything. So that's why inspections are a little bit less.
Okay.
Um, as it pertains to incentivizing not having re-inspections, we do offer a three-year, uh, certificate. Certificate for landlords who have less than five, um. Issues and none of which are health and safety. And so very few people actually get them, but we do have some landlords that actually do receive. The three-year certificate, which allows them basically to have a, an extra year at no additional cost. Um, and then.
The garden vacant.
Garden, so that is if you want to do a community garden on a vacant land, there is a review fee. It is nominal. It's more just. Uh, allowing us to accept the application. Those are the three that I can answer right now quickly and then shoot, I'll stand up here for a minute.
Great, thank you. The other question was around, um, are our fees very different from others?
As far as, as far as, um, special events goes, I know there was a lot of updates last year. I've been working with the special events coordinator, uh, to see kind of, were those right? We have gotten a lot of complaints. This year about our fees, uh, as far as relating to, uh, specifically noise permits and some of the actual special events fees. So we are looking at that right now and there are some updates that are coming. I know those were worked with, uh, pretty aggressively with the DPS director and we have not had to have a, got to have a conversation about that, but. Uh, they were increased pretty substantially last year. And so we, we will check other communities, see where we're at, understanding that our parks are.
Yeah, and I, and our costs are a little different. Um. And then I was trying to, I mean, I mean, I, I'll wait for this, because I know it's late. I just was, I wanted, I was trying to get examples of the different classes of the special events. To kind of understand those different steps.
That's actually pretty, it's, it's all about size. So anything class four is over ten thousand people, anything with an, it has alcohol. And then in our special events, I can actually get you our, our special events, um, manual to kind of talk about where those classes events are. It's public versus private. Usually anything that's a really big public event is a three. Sometimes it's a two.
Mm-hmm.
A tier one event is private typically.
And then, thank you. My last question, I think, um. I guess I was trying to figure out when the fire and police fees, when they would occur, that was, are those. Um, because that's separate from special events.
So I think that's if the fire and police department are required to be there, part of the event. Some events, it is required if alcohol is, is, is being served, as a police presence, that needs to be there. It just depends on the event and what the request is and then what are requirements.
Okay, and then the last question I had, um, I mean, maybe this is, this is, might be more of just like an update. But like I saw that we charge for unauthorized parking on city property, fifty dollars. And then seventy dollars after twenty-one days. And you know what that made me think of? It made me think of Troy Street. And like, wait a minute, have we been charging them anything and what's going on with that? Why haven't we charged them?
I, I have no idea about how our parking fees work, so I'm going to take a step back. Troy Street, that's the nice little, uh.
Well, I was just wondering, because it just, it does have that on here of, and that's what we have said. So it just made me, it just brought it back forward and I have no idea what's going on with that. Case at all, but I also just wonder why haven't we done that if we haven't?
I can give a report on Troy Street. That's gone to, to a lawsuit. The, um, neighbor sued the city. We wrote a countersuit. There was a hearing not too long ago where the city prevailed on every issue and the president, the, um, neighbor has now filed a motion for a rehearing. So there should be some final decision pretty quick, but right now.
They sued the city?
Yes.
That's how. At each other.
No.
No, they were suing the city saying they owned it.
Wow. There's a word for that.
By, uh, adverse possession or perspective, either. That doesn't run against the city.
Thank you.
Any other comments on fees? Mr. Sweet.
I'd say, just from looking, I spent a lot of time looking at the special event ones, just because they've been a hot topic. Um, and I don't know if this is like a typo, but I'm looking at like the mobile command and the police cruiser for special events. And one is like thirteen dollars and one is nine dollars. Um, seems like a very odd and very low amount for what it is. Um, maybe it's not used, I don't know, um, but it, the amount just felt weird and not appropriate with, in line with everything else on here. And then Councilmember Simmons kind of already echoed some of the. Comments about. The, just general special event fee increases.
Any other comments, questions? The only thing I had a question about was the.
The only thing I had a question about was the uh, five hundred dollar fee for the uh, noise ordinance. And you addressed that earlier, so that's, that's good.
Remember when we did that? Right?
And the reason behind it, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it enlightened me.
Well, cause we had a lot of complaints from Riverside, from Riverside Park about events being very loud and kinda putting, I think it was it, it was, you know, to put the onus on the, you know, festival go or the event coordinator to, you know, if you really wanna do this, then this is the now though. Basically, basically to discourage. Well, I, I, that was what seemed like the intention at the time. I don't know how well it worked, but.
And to make, yeah.
Raising deterrence.
That's what I interpreted that, that to be, but.
Mr. Myers? As it pertains to that, just, just to kind of let you know where, what we're thinking, uh, the events aren't stopping, they're just stopping getting permits. So you could tactically.
How much are the fines for noise? Violations?
I don't know if we've ever charged one.
Alright. You should make that a deterrent, right?
So that's, that's just one of those where people are stopping getting the permits. And I've been told and it's once again, I'll clarify that people are actually booking our parks, selling event tickets and not actually getting any sort of permits and is doing it. Because the fees are, are getting to be a little too high.
Really?
I haven't seen that, cause I feel like most of the ones that people complain about are the ones that, the big ones that we are permitting.
I'm aware, so this, this is something that we're still investigating. Uh, a- and so there's a lot of, I've, I've been working with the city manager pretty closely. Haven't got a chance to talk to Bonnie, but we've all, we all have lots of things to say.
I can appreciate that. Seems like this conversation has run its course. Next item on the agenda is discussion of uh, regarding fireworks ordinance, and I know that uh, Councilperson McLean brought that forward with my support.
Before continuing with this, council might wanna uh, extend.
Motion to extend the meeting. What was the last one, till midnight?
Yes.
We do twelve thirty?
I'll move to extend the meeting till twelve thirty.
Let's, let's not take it that far.
Support.
Have a second?
Support.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll try to be brief with this one. Um, I think we all got an email from uh, Mr. Pierce uh, in the back and about a week ago or so. Um, I looked into that a little bit. And city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I understand things from both that email and, and my own looking into it further. State law is applicable here. State allows cities to to allow fireworks on as many days as they like, but they mandate that they cannot restrict fireworks on certain days. And the certain days are holidays or around holidays, including July fourth and some time before that, uh, along with the actual days. And then our ordinance in effect piggybacks off that. It must include the days that the state says we have to, to allow them. But ours allows some additional days typically on either side of those same holidays. And so depending on how you count it and depending on the hours, um, we come up with about thirty-three to thirty-five days where uh, they are allowed.
Additional days?
Nope, total, total at the, at the city level. Um, but that is over and above the roughly, I wanna say eleven, thirteen days, so low teens that are mandated. In fact, we must allow fireworks on those, on those days. Now, I'm gonna set aside for a quick second my feelings on preemption laws, because that's another whole screed.
It's okay, you shared.
But it's, you know, it seems, you know, pretty outrageous that they're getting into the, into that business, but we'll, we'll say that for another day. But my, my real question is simply to, to put this to members of council. Um, and you know, I'm curious to know what, what your constituents might think about this. Every year I hear, long before I was on council, would hear that, you know, it's too loud, it's too late, it's too often. So my sense is that there's some appetite for a reduction, or at least a reduction back to what the, perhaps the minimum the state allows or something uh, akin there to. So for tonight, I just wanna make you aware of it, may try to bring something forward at some point in the near future, not trying to do anything prior to this July fourth. Um, that would be impossible to do even if we tried, but um, going forward, I think now around the July fourth holiday is the time to perhaps poll people and, and talk to your constituents and see what they're, what they're thinking. I have, I have my own feelings about this, but I really think it's a sort of a community issue and how people broadly feel about it, and if there's, seems to be broad consensus that there should be less, then we could, we could do that, but I know there's, there's issues around pets, um, around veterans and PTSD and, and triggering. There's environmental concerns uh, as well, so whole host of reasons um, you know, why the fireworks lobby should not prevail here. That's so, those are my thoughts, happy to have further discussion or, or not for tonight, but.
Any other comments or questions?
I was just gonna say, I don't know if it was a group email, but I did not see the email, so if someone wants to port it, so we can have that information, that would be great. And House Member Simmons sounded like she didn't receive it either.
Alright, we can, we can pour that on, make sure it gets served.
Mr. Sweet?
Oh, you can go ahead. I was just gonna say, I agree with the comments that you made and, and bringing us back in alignment with um, what is required of us basically, so.
I could add one thing, essentially our ordinance uh, mimics the state except for two things. We, our, our ordinance lists the federal holidays rather, and which are outside of what the, the, the state lists, and then we allow them to go to one AM opposed to eleven forty-five PM. It would be a, if council would like to just follow the state's model, it'd be fairly simple amendment.
I'm sorry, what, what, you said the main thing was?
Oh, our ordinance calls out federal holidays, so there's a lot of holidays included in that, that are uh, fireworks holidays. And then also our ordinance allows until one AM while the state says we have to allow them up to eleven forty-five, but we allow them to one, so we're not stopping them, but we could also just stop them at eleven forty-five or midnight.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
If there's no other comments, um, I wanna add that uh, you know, I was sitting with my daughter and granddaughter at the pool last night and this conversation came up and my daughter gave this arms-length list of reasons why fireworks were not a good idea. And then I said, I love fireworks. So I see both points, the environmental issues, PTSD, pets, small children, um, people blowing their hands off, all these things come into, to um, my concerns about this. Um, the one issue that I would add to this is that uh, if we change this, then we, we need to think about enforcement. And it's only gonna be as good as the enforcement we have on this, so um, you know, I, I think people now go far outside the bounds of our, of our current policy, um, significantly. I mean, this is like, I'm, I'm here in Fourth of July fireworks until the fifteenth, you know, that's, that's just my neighborhood, right? But I think that we need to bring the chief in on this to, to have some uh, conversation about what the feasibility and practicality of enforcing this is. And I think that goes hand in hand with people then reporting it. So lots of people are, are, wherever you have engaging the police force, but this is, this is one of those instances where that's inappropriate response, I think. Did you have a question?
I did not, but I mean, who knows tomorrow, it might be a lot of fireworks.
Alright. You good?
Um, any, so the discussion, good on the fireworks, alright. Uh, we're at liaison reports, Police Advisory Commission.
Yes, so YPAC will be meeting this Thursday at um, on June twentieth, um, at seven PM here in Council Chambers, but there, but there is a joint HRC and YPAC meeting um, coming up on June twenty-seventh at the YDL Superior Township location located at nineteen hundred Harris Road to discuss and plan the Community Forum Series on Public Safety. Yeah, that's where they um, decided to have the meeting held. The joint meeting, that is. I mean, that's it, that's all I got.
Thank you. HRC?
I'll go ahead and repeat some of the same information. We do meet on June twenty-seventh. HRC will meet at six PM until around seven fifteen. Again, at the Itzalanti District Library Superior, where we will have a joint meeting at seven fifteen. Thank you.
You, Parks and Arts?
Um, had a productive meeting yesterday evening, uh, discussed Parks and Arts ordinance, um, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, um, and goals and priorities for the commission going forward.
Sustainability?
Yes, let's see here. Uh, during a sustainability uh, meeting, we talked about a few things, I'm just um, well, I'll start with just a couple of things that Bonnie had shared with the commissioners, which is that we join um, Ann Arbor twenty thirty district um, around energy audits. I don't feel like I wrote that down right. Um, we also uh, submitted a letter of support uh, for county resiliency updates for the Towner Building. I know there is some things, well, um, but that's all I have on here. I think that's, I think we, that's mostly it.
HTC?
HTC met on June eleventh, uh, included a discussion of two oh six North River Street. And as I was seeking to get the rest of my notes, um, my phone with the notes died, so uh, that's as much that I've got. I believe the next meeting is July ninth, uh, but I have to confirm that.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
Um, Planning Commission has not met since our last meeting.
ZBA?
Uh, neither have they.
SEMCOG?
SEMCOG, uh, General Assembly meets June twenty-seventh, I'm gonna go to that, it's an afternoon meeting uh, all day or all afternoon on that. So uh, also a couple of reports came out, a shared prosperity in Southeast Michigan from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, I got that notice today, so um, if you don't have uh, notices from SEMCOG, I can send that information forward. Um, and they also just updated their uh, economic indicators, and so they have a better dashboard of, of data available. So I can also forward that if, if people are interested.
Alright, Watts? You got what?
Watts, does her?
Oh, Councilmember McLean.
Oh, McLean?
I did not go to that meeting.
Okay, well, neither of us were there then. Um, Urban County? That meeting was on the fifth. There's anything pressing to share? Um, the DDA will meet on Thursday and um, the primary, I'm sure focus will be reviewing the IGA. Um, Rutherford Pool?
Uh, they met, uh, there are ongoing issues with, um, so, thank you to, to city manager Alanga for helping with the reimbursement for the resurfacing, there have been lots of emails going back and forth with that, so thank you for facilitating that. The pool was open and lots of folks were there last night, it was really crowded, it was, it was great to see all those kids running around, um, those going on. Their, their enrollment in their swim lessons, I, I mentioned this a while back that they had uh, gone with um, electronic registration from uh, Parks. Sorry, blinking on it, um, Metro Parks, sorry. That has been problematic. Um, they are requiring lots of different things from, from these folks in terms of the metrics and it, it doesn't seem to be a good fit in terms of the families that are being served having access and then the requirements and follow-ups that, that the Metro Parks is having, so that's been a a frustrating point for them, so I'm not sure what that's gonna look like going forward. In the past, um, it's been a fairly relaxed relationship, but now it seems to be strained by the, the requirements that they're putting on them for, for the reporting. That's it.
Thank you. Um, alright, we're at Council Proposed Business, so I'll start with Councilmember King.
So all I have is Happy Juneteenth, as we celebrate tomorrow, and if you're here this weekend, please come downtown and celebrate Juneteenth.
Councilmember Simmons?
Uh, yes, so I just wanted to say I'm really excited that um, that we signed up for, uh, or at least applied for um, the signed up to uh, apply to join a cohort of support um, that Harvard Policy School is putting forward around alternative nine-one-one response. Um, and I, um, even though I think that um, I think that we don't have a lot to show for making progress on this. Um, I think the good news is I've heard that there's interest in seeing an application from Michigan, so um, maybe our location will help make us more viable or attractive for that. Um, I also wanted to just update, cause I know people, folks have been asking, so uh, Ann Arbor City Council actually had put on their agenda to reallocate their ARPA funds um, to lots of other things. And then they also were going to um, be um, uh, rece- approving, the receiving of a grant from the Michigan State Police for community crisis response. And um, which I'm like, wow, how do we get that? That was something that I think they, they said they got, they got that through um, support from Jason Morgan, their representative, so maybe that's something too for us to ask our representative about how we can get access to some of those kinda grant monies. Um, but um, they, those things were struck in from the agenda, so they actually didn't have those conversations. They were removed from the agen- agenda after they were added. And so it's still a question what's gonna be happening, but I'm guessing that they probably got some pushback on those plans and um, had some other questions, so just keeping folks updated on that. Also, I think the, the last thing I'll say, well, one, you know, we've had a lot of new businesses opening, yay, hello, congratulations. I've been coming by and um, and then I also just wanna say, so um, just mentioned the response um, that Councilmember King and I uh, witnessed uh, the other week, just to name again, understanding um, some of the different costs of our current response, so we were going through downtown, like I said, at the depot. and there were three fire trucks, at least two police cars, maybe three, and two ambulances. Um, and someone was receiving, um, was trying to be revived in the bathroom at the uh, transit center. Um, and it was a little surreal, because as we have all of this response, all these flashing lights, there are like kids like playing, you know, just like having a good time, older kids, like, you know, just. And I was like, what was happening? We had to get out and ask and talk to some folks to figure out what was going on. Um, but I just made, it just for me highlighted again, you know, that we actually are paying a lot for our current, our current respond. Um, and um, we could, yes, we could have something that is much more reasonable and um, targeted and, and probably without, without all of the lights that everybody else is experiencing in the space that they're just existing in, um, and more uh, clear access to services for people. So um, that was just, you know, I, that wasn't just one of those other experiences I just wanted to bring here and bring forward to name, that as we're thinking about these things, that, that's, that's what our current response is. That's a lot, right, as we learned um, during our budget uh, process, so. Yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Um, just a, a number of things, I, I attended the Bike Rodeo at E M U um, this past Saturday, um, I was there as a liaison to the Non-Motorized Advisory Committee. Um, it's a great community event, um, with uh, you know, spoke with the chief from, from E M U and Sergeant Torres, who organized it, is a bike cop, um, so lots of uh, good conversations about equipment that could be um, used in our own uh, force. Um, and, and how that dovetails with community policing and getting, getting officers added to the community. I think it'd be very beneficial for um, special events, especially in the parks, um, to have uh, one or two bikes on, in our um, fleet uh, to do, but it's a great event. Um, was a good turnout, um, lots of good things going on. Um, I was at the Freight House for um, the D D A's uh, presentation of, of options for the, the um, Plaza uh, opposite of the Freight House, and there was a fairly good turnout. Um, there were mixed reviews, some folks, uh, some feedback I got was that you shouldn't lead with, with designs and things like that, but, but survey more for what the intended uses are and what people think the uses would be, so stepping it back a notch and, and it seemed like there was a, a basic level of distrust in some of the, the community members in terms of feeling like they'd been left out of part of the conversation already. Um, so that's uh, feedback I got from that. Um, the city put forward a, a letter of support for a resilience uh, grant that uh, City of Ann Arbor was um, putting in for, and so uh, City Manager Alanga cut that, um, there was a meeting that um, he and I and, and Bonnie Westler were at, where that was brought up, a um, Missy Stoltz, so that got in as well. And hopefully that will uh, translate to more uh, resources for resilience work um, in the city. Um, one last thing is that our uh, coffee hours uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, folks showed up and were complaining about rats, and in particular on Summit. Um, and I have an address that I'll give to the city manager, but um, if we could get that property um, inspected, um, there seems to be a junkyard in the backyard, I mean, multiple cars that are immobile. Um, there's a space between the garage and the neighbor's garage that is full of refrigerators and shelving and all manner of uh, metal bits that you can think of, and the neighbors are of the opinion that the rats are uh, seeking shelter there. So uh, if you could get that taken care of, I'll give you the address. And that's it.
Well, I'll say that it was um, very nice to see Ipsy Pride on the seventh, um, alive and thriving in Depot Town. Um, huge, huge, huge turnout, um, so very kudos to the organizers for putting that together and the work that goes into that, um, from someone that works in events and um, and know that it's no easy feat. So kudos to those folks. Um, another thing I'll add is I'm just also um, excited to see the senior center um, R F P be put out for their kind of design and um, um, additional outdoor work to revitalize that patio there and make it a more active space for our older adult community.
Councilmember McLean?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, a couple of quick things. Uh, first, just a heads up to other councilmembers, I'll uh, expect at some point, I think in July or soon thereafter, uh, to bring forward some kind of action to establish a historic district for the Peninsula Dam uh, building. Um, working with the um, staff member, uh, Ellen, uh, with the H D C uh, on that. I wanna thank Bonnie for help with Element Congress, uh, looks, looks good. I guess it's still waiting for a patch, but the, the basic work has been done, uh, so we certainly appreciate that. One other issue I'll point out, um, probably all heard, that a couple of days ago in Rochester, there was another mass shooting. Um, several people injured, I don't know if anyone's died, but um, you know, another terrible event uh, involving guns, uh, involving guns that we can't regulate here by law. Um, but uh, it's a good article, I think it's today's uh, online Bridge Magazine, um, talking about how the, the red flag laws that we have passed here don't go far enough. Uh, they allow for people in a household, family members, to report somebody that they're concerned about. But other people that may well have information about uh, people who are a danger to themselves or to society uh, with firearms, um, do not have the standing to, to make those kinds of reports to law enforcement. Um, so again, understanding that we can't do anything about that at this level, uh, but we can potentially send a signal, we might wanna think about doing that um, through some kind of a resolution suggesting that those red flag laws be expanded. Um, so it's constantly the issue of, of safety and, and gun safety particularly, um, is something that's eye on my, a list of concerns, so. Something for our consideration, and finally, I'll just note that I will be absent from our July second meeting for um, a family vacation that was scheduled about a year ago. Um, so apologize for that, um, I understand that I can join remotely, um, though I would ask City Manager or Mr. Barr, uh, in what capacity am I able to um, to join, I know I can't vote.
You could be a part of discussion, you don't count a quorum, you can't vote.
Thank you. That's it.
Yeah, that's number two, Simmons?
Yes, so um, the Monday before this pass, when I had the opportunity to um, attend Ballin' on the South, um, hosted by Supreme Felons right there at Park Ridge Park. Um, that is actually every Monday, I think for nine Mondays, if I'm not mistaken. Um, at six P M right there at Park Ridge Park, three, three on three for the kids to come out and play uh, play basketball in a tournament and win some prizes. Um, I'd also like to highlight the Morris Science Temple number forty-three, they did a shoe giveaway right there at um, Parker Community Park this last Saturday, that was a big hit for me. The event was supposed to start at one P M, but the line started at nine thirty, ten o'clock in the morning, and um, it was, all the shoes were gone by the time I got there on time. Um, also, once again, I'd like to um, echo that Juneteenth, our event is, the event happening in Ipsy is this Friday to Sunday right there in the south Huron Lot, so if you would like to, please come on down and celebrate with us. Um, also, um, seven three four Motor Club is having a car show right there at Christie's on Washtenaw Avenue on Saturday evening, I think at around seven thirty. So if you wanna see some nice newer style and older cars, come on out, we'd love to have you. Um, and I got a few things for Bonnie and um, the chief that I'll just email to y'all, that's it.
Thank you. Um, honestly, I've forgotten the things that I, because I didn't write them down earlier. I do want to apologize for my absence in that last portion um, of the resolution on the floor. I had to deal with a crisis, um, so I will I'll use a long time, so City Manager?
I'll just be real quick, uh, department heads will be starting uh, strategic planning for the next budget cycle, starting on July ninth. And then as uh, Councilmembers King and Tousin said, I just wish everyone a happy Juneteenth.
Can I say a few things that I, just a couple of things? So I just wanted to note that the speed radar, again, was not working over there by Perry School. I'm not sure if it's an issue with that monitor itself. And I was able to participate in helping to repaint the Black Lives Matter Boulevard. And while I was there, Trishay Duckworth mentioned she would like to start the repaint in Riverside Park, but she said it does need some road repair.
Thank you. Um, this is our, wait, did City Manager, yes, second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council, please raise your.
Good evening, council and mayor, um, indeed, happy Juneteenth. Um, and speaking of that, I just wanna say, it's great that we have our flag, it's great that we have our acknowledgement, it's great that we have our Black Lives Matter painted in our city streets, not one place, but two. So now we need policies that really emphasize that black lives actually do matter and that they are valuable, um, and that wouldn't mean um, taking another look at the drug checking policy. Um, also, fed up ministries, we're talking about people wanting more services as if this is an issue. Your city government, that's your job, you can help people with public services. Um, and we've spent over a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars on some tasers. We've spent over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to police field services from our millage. So I love the performative allyship of like acknowledging Juneteenth and acknowledging Black Lives Matter on our streets. And Pride was a riot that started from police brutality towards the queer community, black and trans queer people. So please actually put forth policies that actually do uplift that sentiment as well, outside of other methods that are also just as equally important, but we need more policies that also shape that. Um, and I also want to specify that um, in the city of Ipsy specifically, there are three different ballot initiatives going around right now um, that people could put their signature on if you are a resident of the city and voter um, in the city of Ipsy. Um, and so I just wanna say that two of them I wanna uplift, like for sure, is one of them is banned, for sake of time, banning application fees, um, giving tenants the right of first refusal and, and requiring a public landlord rental registry for increasing transfer uh, transparency and accessibility. This is an example of a policy that would be actually helping affordable housing, rather than just saying that we wanna invest in permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing. There's more to affordable housing than just those two things, which does increase public safety. Um, and another one is stopping the police budget from increasing without popular vote in a general election, and this is also important, um, the people of the city of Ipsy deserve to have a voice in whether or not we continue to fund um, our police department, which again is more, more funding received there than in human services, same as the county, so thank you.
Pardon me, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to form?
Um, good evening again, yeah, so first of all, thank you guys for putting that resolution on the agenda for today to begin with. Um, I think I probably failed in appropriately like educating council leading up to the resolution being put out on kind of like what the ask was and why. Um, sitting, kinda sitting back and, and listening, the only objection I think was from the, the Chief of Police. Um, the, the first time I presented for you guys, I, I gave you a letter of intent from our county prosecutor, um, who, so any, any felony charges that happened in Washtenaw County are gonna be tried um, by, by his team. That letter of intent said he would not prosecute anyone in Washtenaw County that was in good faith using drug checking. Um, he then released a draft of the policy that that letter of intent was referring to. Um, I'd also submitted that to you guys. The resolution was directly taken out of that draft language. So it's, it's a directive from, from the prosecutor's office that hasn't been published yet. Um, we're trying to get drug checking started in Ipsy. Um, you're, you're not changing anything, so the police, without this resolution, can still arrest people and take away their substances, they won't get prosecuted. So, so there, you're not, by, by voting no, really the only thing that you did was make it less comfortable for participants to use the program, because they have to worry about being criminalized. You made it more difficult for the staff to feel safe at work, and you made it more difficult for us to seek out funding, because it's hard to find funders if what you're doing is criminalized in the municipality that the services are being offered in. Um, so that's, that was the only result of the no votes. The, the, the letter of intent from our prosecutor exists, the policy, um, the first draft exists. We've already had the meeting to go over the language from the first draft, no changes were made to the directives. So, so literally, the only thing that you did was hurt people who use drugs, make it harder for folks to get life-saving harm reduction services, um, and make it harder for, for us to, to offer that in Ipsilhany. And I've told you guys a couple of times, you know, criminalization and overdose are two areas where black folks are really, really disproportionately impacted. And it's kinda serendipitous that like, we had a resolution the day before Juneteenth that affected criminalization and overdose and would have saved black lives, and it lost by one vote. So, thank you guys for your time.
Steve, you had your hand up?
The first one will apologize, I accidentally did not include um, Councilmember Simmons and um, uh, and, and Councilmember King in my email uh, that I had sent to council, it was totally my fault, and, and I apologize for that, and I have sent uh, copies to you, uh, and thanks for pointing that out. Um, my concerns uh, regarding the development at um, on Pearl Street, uh, council and staff have been fabulous in listening to the concerns that the community uh, have had. Um, the real reason that I'm here speaking is to put on public record so that the developer understands that you can't come before you and lie, um, and you can't deceive and you can't hide. Um, if you wouldn't answer the question about the rents, the, the numbers are there, Councilmember Simmons mentioned it, it's fifteen sixty-five to twenty-two thirty-five, which, and, and that's thirty percent, uh, would not uh, uh, would not tell you that, and, and it's published numbers from the county. Um, there's no opportunity, the, the lawyer said there's no, uh, that there was opportunity for the Mowers to respond, no, there's not. Um, the, the, the council rules and, and Planning Commission rules limit comments to people who are not applicants to three minutes, and they must speak at the beginning and cannot respond to any of the crazy things that we heard even tonight from their attorney. Um, uh, there had been uh, offers and suggestions to change the design. They put a driveway between the two buildings, if they'd moved it out in the north, it would preserve the driveway, they could have driven around, handled the trash, they could still use the parking, uh, they've rejected that. They could have uh, created an overhang that would allow uh, uh, vehicles to come through there and still be able to park, they rejected that. Um, the developer has bullied the Mowers, they've threatened the Mowers, um, and the, the barriers are a clear example of that. Um, and, and the attorney tonight, the attorney recommended to the client to put up those barriers last week. That was their attorney, she was speaking tonight, it was their attorney that said to put up those barriers. And she said that this was so that the contractors would uh, know where the line is. Well, if they wanted to know the line is, all they do is paint a Well, if they wanted to know the line is, all they do is paint a line. They didn't have to put up thousand pound barriers to keep people from getting to the parking spots. And then something that was said tonight that's not correct, and it's been said multiple times, and I'm pleased I needed to correct this tonight. The Mowers are not charging for that space. They're not making any money. They are not making any money on the land that, that, that they own. The only thing that happens is they drive across that driveway. That driveway has existed since the late seventies and they pull into the Mowers parking. There's no charging for that parking. It's to provide space there. So let's get that clear. This is a development for, by a landlord or tenants. We say we want less of this. We're getting more. The PUD says open space is, 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 you should ask for things. The rooftop access, make that a public space. Charge the developer for using the parking lot for storage materials. They're going to come to the city and ask for that. The developer doesn't live in the city. They love saying, I live here, but doesn't actually live in the city. Does live in the county, but not in the city. And this is why for three minutes is so frustrating. There's still four other items here. Good night.
Night. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Anna Taylor, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you, council members, for hearing the proposal tonight from Fed Up Ministries, the resolution and you know, ultimately voting to postpone it. I kind of echo Kat and Corn's comments from a little bit earlier. I hope that the allocation of money for the homeless community in response to kind of the things that were happening last summer, I hope that it was not performative. I hope that when the conversation comes back around, the question will not be, how do we not spend all of this money for this next year? Or if you do spend it, I really hope that you get the five votes you need to put more money into that pot to continue doing work to supporting, to continue supporting our, our folks on the streets. And when we are all thriving, when our folks on the streets are thriving, it is better also for our residents and our business owners. So, you know, our organization is going to continue doing the work that we do because it's a calling and we're going to do it with or without the support of the city. But my hope is that we can partner together in doing this because I think it is really important for people to see that the city is invested in continuing to enrich the lives of everybody and not just the folks who have the means to kind of do it themselves, but that government and church and, and social welfare, welfare organizations are here to see the whole community thrive. And you know what? My little win tonight was Steve Pierce. Steve, publicly, thank you again for your comments, you guys. This is proof, this is proof that something bigger than us is at work right there. Y'all have seen some of the frustrations and some of the meetings that we have been to. And some of the folks in the community have opened their minds enough to be receptive of our work. So I really appreciate your words tonight and all of the support. And I just hope that the next time we meet, it's under even more joyful circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in line?
There's not.
Okay. Seeing that, then I will close public comment and the meeting is adjourned. Tomorrow morning, I will not be able to attend. I know, I was trying to look that up, but it was just saying.